Good afternoon. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum this evening?
A quorum.
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Warren will be absent this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I would like to announce that File Item 3, the third-party appeal in Natoma's Crossing Quadrant B office, is being continued tonight. Without objection to what date again, Councilmember Ashby?
Fourteenth.
August the fourteenth. All right? So anyone who is here on that particular item, it is continued until the fourteenth of August.
Make a motion on that?
Do we need a motion? A motion to continue, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Excuse me, abstain. That measure is continued. All right. Let us, I want to first of all say to the public, we apologize for not starting right at five o'clock. We had a lengthy afternoon workshop and then a closed session, and it ran over, so we apologize for any inconvenience to the public. Let us begin with special presentations. You say we're going to reverse them, Madam?
Yes, please.
Madam Clerk, we're going to begin with presentation number two. I want to turn this over to Councilmember Guerra, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to recognize on behalf of the city of Sacramento Rodrigo Baez, here, who is the Consul de Protección for the Consul General of Mexico. I'd like to also recognize our Consul General of Mexico, who's been stationed here for Sacramento, Leiana Ferrera. Big round of applause for all her work that she's been doing out here.
But I'm literally going to make this quick and short because we are losing an advocate
that's been helping our immigrant community here in Sacramento, Rodrigo Baez, the Consul de Protección, to Chicago unfortunately, and he literally has to catch a plane and be at the airport right after this. So we're going to make this, we're moving this early because we're losing him actually to the city of Chicago in about an hour, but Rodrigo, please come on forward. So Rodrigo is, has been involved in all our efforts here in this new federal administration that's been attacking many of our family members in the immigrant community. He has been instrumental in the work and collaboration with our local nonprofits and our local law schools like UC Davis Law, McGeorge School of Law, and organizations like Coalition of Rural Housing. He's here with his wife Natalia Garcia, and we, you know, in a very, big round of applause. Thank you for your service. But Rodrigo, and I'll say a few words. Muchas gracias por su servicio aquí en la comunidad de Sacramento. Este, la comunidad aquí inmigrante, no nomás los nacionales mexicanos, los paisanos, pero todos los inmigrantes han beneficiado de tu apoyo y para los derechos civiles de toda la gente aquí. We appreciate your civil rights work and your advocacy work that you've done here. And most importantly, he helped in the first-ever recognition of the Sacramento LGBTQIA community by the Consul General of Mexico here. With that, it's my great pleasure to, and I'll read this recognition, but my great pleasure to thank you for all your services, Rodrigo. Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we have another council member here lined up to speak.
Yes, of course. Councilmember Ashby.
Sure. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Councilmember Guerra for bringing you forward. Hi. Good to see you. And I love working with the consulate. They are, of course, I proudly host them in my district, but these guys do so much. They open everything up to the community. So for example, college fairs and steps to college, and at one point, we had a partnership with UC Davis on some health information and just getting information out to the community. And all, a lot of times, the great work that happens up here needs a place in the community to resonate with the right people, and very often, it lands with you in the consulate. So very grateful to call you guys partners and friends and neighbors. Thank you for your hard work, and really great to have the general here tonight, too.
Thank you.
Rodrigo, unas palabras, some few words.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'll be brief, and first, I would like to start with thanking Councilmember Eric Guerra, Mayor Steimer, and the council members here for this recognition that is actually for my team, which helped me so much during these five years, and of course, to my wife and to all the great partners and allies that the Sacramento City has. All the resources that are available for the community are really amazing. And we arrived, my wife and I, five years ago here to Sacramento, moving from Albuquerque, New Mexico, we posted in this consulate, and we enjoyed our stay here very, very much. We visited the museums, dinner at the river, Midtown, learned about the trip of the salmon at the hatchery, enjoy local wineries and breweries. We wanted to make the best out of Sacramento, and we enjoyed it a lot. So you have a beautiful city. I am very grateful for my five years here and work-wise also. I enjoy it very much assisting my people, which is also your people, and it is amazing to work with authorities so inclusive, authorities with such progressive thinking and welcoming to immigrants, that you made my work better, and we work together helping this wonderful community. So this recognition, I accepted also on behalf of my team, of all the rest of my workers at the consulate, and I thank you, thank you very much for this.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just, I'll read only the resolved here because I don't want him to miss his flight, but therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, council, the city of Sacramento, we do hereby extend to Rodrigo Baez our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to his community, our congratulations on his successful commission and tenure, and our best wishes for his continued happiness, good health, and success in all endeavors. Thank you for being an advocate for legal access to legal services here in Sacramento, Rodrigo Baez. Felicidades. Muchas gracias. Mr. Mayor, could you take a quick photo with us? With the consul?
Thank you so much. I just want to thank you, the city of Sacramento, and council members, Ashby, Eric Guerra, but all of you. Susana Alcala Wood is the only one that I have not been able to visit personally, but I have to visit with you as well, and very much look forward to continuing to work with this great city of Sacramento and its authorities. Like Rodrigo said, you guys are wonderful. Without you as a team, we would not be able to do our job at the consulate. Rodrigo is a great asset. The consulate of Mexico in Sacramento is losing him. Sacramento is losing him, but Chicago is winning, and Sacramento has won already, and we have won already by having him here for almost five years. Committed, dedicated, he was always the first one to arrive at the office and the last one to leave. Incredible disposition, great dedication, a very skilled and savvy attorney, and a true Mexican diplomat that has a very bright future. He's one of our rising stars, and I can only wish him all the best. Much success to him and his lovely family, his wife, and many children to come, I hope. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you to the council general for being here tonight, too. Thank you.
Why did the city break down the Occupy Ice Camp?
You're supposedly for immigrants, Mr. Mayor. Why did yours just go forty deep with armed police officers and break down the Occupy Ice Camp?
There is no shouting out from the audience, please. We're doing special presentations.
Oh, keep it quiet. I understand. Tell me, please. Look at.
Mr. Andre Mackenzie LB, consider that a warning.
Don't call my name.
You've been warned.
I told you once.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move now to the second presentation. Vice Mayor Hanson recognizing the 100 years of William Land Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this brief. Today, as the old adage goes, time flies when you're having fun, and we'll soon be celebrating this Friday, 100 years of William Land Park. William Land came to Sacramento as a teenager, made a fortune in the gold rush, ultimately became mayor, and right before he died, left $150,000 roughly to the city to build a park in his honor. Now that park of 236 acres is enjoyed by over one and a half million people a year who come to the zoo, fairy tale town, use the golf course, play baseball, take their kids to Thunderland, and it's truly a crown jewel in the city park system. And today, joining us to help celebrate that, we have the president of the Land Park Community Association, Stephanie Duncan, and Rick Stevenson from the Land Park Volunteer Corps. These two organizations, both the Neighborhood Association and the Volunteer Corps, have worked tirelessly, not only to advocate for the park, whether it's for resources or just with the Volunteer Corps stepping up during the recession and planning a monthly workday, which is actually coming up, I believe, this weekend, to make sure the park is kept beautiful and useful for the families that enjoy their time there. In the back, I also see LPC Board Member Pinky Stevenson, Pinky Cockrell, sorry, and Art Taylor. Maybe Pinky, you're not a board member anymore, but you'll always be a board member for us. This Friday night, to celebrate, VIX is going to be doing a, excuse me, VIX is going to be doing a special 100th anniversary ice cream, and Freeport Bakery is also doing a special cake. We're going to be showing the movie Coco, which is a phenomenal movie, this Friday night in celebrating the park. Rick and Stephanie, would you like to say something, and then we'll present our proclamation?
Yeah, I just want to thank the city council for just recognizing the 100th anniversary of William Land Park. First and foremost, we always have to thank William Land for bequeathing the money that the city used to purchase this plot of land that we've all been able to enjoy over the years. Both the Land Park Community Association and the Land Park Volunteer Corps were formed specifically to care for the park and advocate on its behalf, so we, you know, take pride in being able to do that for our community, and we're happy that William Land Park is here for the entire region, for everyone to come and enjoy this amenity.
Thank you, Stephanie. Rick, did you want to say something real quick? And I promised to get that Stevenson fountain, or that, the fountain going that you've been working on so hard.
Well, the, I just wanted to mention that when William Land left that bequest, a lot of the major parks in the area, you had to pay to get into, and because he came as a poor teenager, he wanted to make sure that the park that he financed would, you know, that he paid for would be open to everybody for free and free access, which of course, now the parks are commonly, but they were not at the end. I believe McKinley Park was originally, you had to pay to enter, and there were others in the downtown area, so.
Yeah, and thank you. That's the Swanson Fountain designed by Ralph Stackpole, who did the fountain in Cesar Chavez Plaza. And also, I want to thank our park staff. I see Shannon Brown, our interim director. We've worked very hard to maintain the rock garden and to work with the corps, so our park staff has really been valuable. Mayor, would you like to join me down for a photo?
I'd be honored. I can't believe $150,000. That before Measure U?
It was a private contribution to the city's betterment.
$16 an ounce gold, that's what it was.
Pinky, do you guys want to join us?
I'm gonna take the.
Sure? Okay.
$16 an ounce gold, that's what it was.
Pinky, do you guys want to join us?
I'm gonna take credit for that. Got to take credit for everything.
I'm gonna take the. Sure? Okay.
One more. One more. Steve.
Thank you. Sorry.
Ready? One, two, three.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have now two public hearings, as again, I remind you that Item Number Three was continued until the 14th of August. Let's begin with Item One. Who's presenting on this item?
Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers Brad Watson, Revenue Manager in the Finance Department. I'd like to introduce to you Latira Walsh. She's our new Program Manager for Enforcement and Collections, and she's going to present the next two items to you. There.
Thank you. This evening, I bring an item to place special assessment liens on properties for unpaid sidewalk repairs. These liens will be placed on the Sacramento County property tax bills. These fees and charges are for delinquent amounts due that have not been collected in the standard billing process. The amount lienable for sidewalk repairs is $175,255.31. All property owners have been notified of the charges and have been given an opportunity to dispute the charges. All disputes have been responded to. Disputes not resolved at the staff level were given the opportunity for a hearing before a delinquency hearing officer. Out of the 183 initial delinquency notices mailed, 14 parcels were protested, four properties had a hearing, and the delinquency hearing officer found the fees due in three cases and reduced the fees in one case. Summaries of the proposed liens and protests are included as attachments to the staff report, starting on Attachment One, Lien Summary. City Council has adopted this administrative appeal process for special assessment liens. Consequently, the mayor and council are not under any obligation to hear specific cases. However, state law does require the council to confirm the special assessment liens against properties and to do so with a public hearing. Therefore, I am requesting the mayor and city council to open a public hearing for sidewalk repairs, conduct the hearings, then adopt the resolution confirming the delinquent amounts due to be sent to the county for collection. This concludes my presentation.
Mayor, I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public testimony on this item? There is not. Okay. Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'm an aye. I forgot to say it. Measure passes. Eight to nothing. Very good. Let's move now to Item Number Two.
So that's me again.
Mr. Mayor, without objection, I move to waive the staff presentation. Did a lovely job before. Open and close the public hearing and approve the item.
Anything needs to be read into the record?
Anything need to be read into the record on this?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good.
All right. Thank you.
No public comment?
We got a vote.
We must vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The measure passes again, eight to nothing. Thank you for the efficiency. It's important issues. These are the basics, as we say, and the very important basics. Okay. Before we move to the discussion calendar, I'd like to ask the clerk to, give the clerk the floor for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the audience that this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live on the city's website or viewed later from the archive files. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip that can be found in the back of the room. Speaker slips do need to be turned in, the clerk, prior to the beginning of each item, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the council. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available, request from the clerk. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices and refrain from using flash photography lights on video equipment. And parking validations are also available from the clerk at the front of the room. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We now move to discussion calendar four-three. I'd like to just describe them because they're different and it might be slightly confusing to the public. Item Four is the proposed ballot measure relating to Measure U. Item Five is the ballot measure relating to the city auditor. Item Six, assuming Items Four and Five pass, are a legal requirement for the call and notice of the placement measures on the ballot, arguably a technicality, a technicality if Four and Five pass. Seven is an important part of the process, but again, a technical piece that would authorize the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. And finally, Number Eight would be authorizing the selection of argument for the authors of the two measures. And so we want to take Four, and then maybe after Four, or we'll take Four and Five, we're going to take them in order, but I just wanted to let you know that the debate really is around Items Four and Five, and that's where the substantive part of the discussion should take place. And I understand, Madam Clerk, we have public testimony on Item Four? On Item Four. Okay. That is very good. So, and by the way, with regard to Item Four, we had a lengthy public workshop this afternoon where we discussed in great detail and made our arguments and comments and good back-and-forth discussion about the merits of Measure U at a full cent or a three-quarter or a half cent, and/or none at all. And so tonight, I expect myself to not speak as much, but we'll see how the debate and discussion goes, but it's another opportunity for the public and our members, and obviously a key vote. So let us begin. Ms. Hernandez, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Consuelo Hernandez, Director of Governmental Affairs. I will give an abbreviated introduction to this item. I'm presenting on Item Four, a proposed ballot measure relating to a transactions and use tax to be placed on the November 6th ballot. This item was discussed extensively, as the mayor mentioned, at the two o'clock meeting of the council. The Budget Nautic Committee also discussed the proposed tax measure at their June 12th and June 26th meetings. This, the proposed measure would put in place a one-cent transactions and use tax. It would require an independent annual audit and a citizens oversight committee, and today we are asking the council to pass an ordinance adding Chapter 3.27 to the Sacramento City Code relating to a transactions and use tax effective upon voter approval, and to pass a resolution approving ballot measure tax replacement on the November 6th ballot. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I think what we ought to do here is we ought to hear from members of the public, and then, you know, there are some council members I know who did not have an opportunity to speak on the merits here during the public workshop. Of course, anybody's welcome, too. And then there may be a substitute motion, or there may be a motion, there's a motion and the potential of a substitute motion, and then we'll proceed from there. Okay? Let us take the public testimony here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 14 people signed up to speak on Item Number Four. The first is Mike Barnbaum, then Celidia King, Adrian Mohammed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Mike Barnbaum, and I would like to support with a motion the staff presentation this evening, with the motion on the table, but I want to make a couple of comments as to why I'm putting a motion of support to what staff just presented to you. Measure U is an essential tool that we have seen and proven provides revenue to the city and in return, essential city services to residents throughout city limits and does not cut the budget because it exists today. A full cent would also allow even further city services to occur, like transportation and infrastructure improvements. As many of you know, there's the SACRT Forward project going on right now to reimagine what the bus system could look like. But we also need road pothole and sidewalk improvements, too. There is a desperate need of a sidewalk in need from Folsom Boulevard to Belvedere Road on Florin Perkins Road in District Six. Many bus routes need more frequent service from every hour to every half hour, every 15 minutes, and we've heard that from our own members at Ride Downtown 916 and SAC True, the Sacramento Transit Riders Union. So we know that you cannot be specific to Measure U because otherwise, you would need a two-thirds vote, but just taking into consideration what Use Measure U could be used for if it is passed under this testimony, so I'm glad to put the motion on the table. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike.
Our next speaker is Sedalia King, Adrian Mohammed, and Joshua Robinson.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. How y'all doing?
How are you? Nice to see you.
You as well, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, everyone. On June 7th, 2018, the campaign launch for the proposed Measure U renewal, Mayor Steinberg said that the voters of Sacramento should rightfully insist that we tie new investments in inclusive economic development to real positive outcomes for neighborhoods and people. If our insistence on neighborhood and economic equality is not wholly reflected in a way that we currently operate, we must change the way we operate, and we wholly agree. Measure U, the Measure U renewal, is an excellent opportunity to insist that we tie these new investments directly to economic opportunities and improved health and well-being for communities that have been marginalized. We believe the community should be, should have a formal role in shaping how Measure U is used. Therefore, we propose that Measure U ballot initiative establish a Measure U Community Investment Commission comprised of nine appointed members endowed with the power to formally provide recommendations to city council on how to allocate and invest in annual revenue. These nine members would include two seats to represent, representatives of youth, faith-based environmental justice, or a public health nonprofit organization, a seat with a person of expertise or experience in housing, a seat for community trauma and mental health, community-based crime reduction, homelessness, economic development, and one for Sacramento's priority neighborhoods, and also additional one for someone who's 24 years or younger. If the establishment of Measure U Community Investment Commission is included in the ballot language for Measure U renewal, the 42 signatories representing, excuse me, 16 organizations will commit to campaigning and for the passage of Measure U.
King, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
And the November 2018 election. And I have the letter for you.
I just want to say, I think you outlined an excellent suggestion here. I want to talk, we want to talk more about it. One of the things I'd like to ask the staff here, this is not public comment, I imagine, not on the agenda, so it's appropriate to, a little bit of a dialogue here. One of the things I would, assuming this passes tonight, what I would like the staff working together with all of us, of course, to bring back is various ways to establish a community investment commission consistent with what King just spoke about, that is community and neighborhood-based. And secondly, that we bring back a series of metrics by which we would consider measuring the investments, so that as we go into November, we actually, and I'm not saying what it all should be, I'm just saying that as we go into November, that we will have made some decisions about the establishment of the appropriate accountability, oversight, community-based engagement, so that not only can we can build more support, but so that the public knows that we are serious about what you just described.
Excellent.
Okay? So that's going to be.
And I have the letter with the 42 signatories and 16 organizations that back this plan.
We get that to the assistant clerk here, and I'd like to look at that. Thank you for coming tonight.
Our next speaker is Adrian Mohammed. Josh.
One of the things I'd like to ask the staff here, this is not public comment, I imagine on the agendas, it's appropriate to, a little bit of a dialogue here. One of the things I would, assuming this passes tonight, what I would like the staff working together with all of us, of course, to bring back is various ways to establish a community investment commission consistent with what King just spoke about, that is community and neighborhood-based. And secondly, that we bring back a series of metrics by which we would consider measuring the investments, so that as we go into November, we actually, and I'm not saying what it all should be, I'm just saying that as we go into November, that we will have made some decisions about the establishment of the appropriate accountability, oversight, community-based engagement, so that not only can we build more support, but so that the public knows that we are serious about what you just described.
Excellent.
Okay?
And I have the letter with the 42 signatories and 16 organizations that back this plan.
We get that to the assistant clerk here, and I'd like to look at that. Thank you for coming tonight.
Our next speaker is Adrian Mohammed, Joshua Robinson, and Janelle Hope. Adrian Mohammed, Joshua Robinson, and then Janelle Hope.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we, I want to speak later, but I just want to add one thing to that on the timing.
Go ahead, sir. Come on up.
And I'm sorry, the speaker's name was? It's about Sidalia?
Sidalia.
Sidalia. I just want to clarify one thing, and I might ask the attorney, one of the things requested in the letter, and we just saw the letter this afternoon as well, was the establishment of this commission, which I actually agree with, and I'll address more later, but in the ballot language, it would be very difficult to put in the ballot language at this point because of the timing of it. We have to finish this tonight. All of the ballot language needs to go to, go through the council with a week's notice and then come back, so it's not possible for us logistically to put it in the ballot language, but I think as the mayor suggested, we can have some discussions as we move through the fall to see how we can make it real to establish the commission so that it's ready to go in November. So, I just wanted to be clear about expectations on that.
No, that's exactly right, although in the argument, for example, if one of us were from the council, if I were making the pro argument in the ballot label, I could argue that we are committed to the establishment of such a commission, and I would do that. I mean, that would be part of, that would be part of my argument.
So, my point is, we're happy to work with you and the organizations that signed up for this, but let's be clear about what we can do and can't do to make it work, but I think we definitely want to make it work. Okay?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mohammed?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Adrian Mohammed, I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Black and Democrats, as well as the Table Sacramento. As Sidalia noted, the need for the commission, given the looming fiscal downturn, it's all the more reason that we need a commission that is representative of these communities and that has the power and the responsibility to hold the city, the city and the city council accountable and formally provide direction on the allocation and investment of Measure U funds. And we believe that the communities represented in the aforementioned letter would, they represent those who will most benefit, those who may possibly be left behind during the so-called Renaissance, right? And we don't want that to happen, and I know through conversations with many of you that you are committed to making sure that we provide equity. And giving the polling numbers of Measure U and the justifiable and valid anger and fear and mistrust that's been on display in the city these recent months, I think it's necessary and incumbent upon the city council to take measures to ensure that the community trusts them, and that we are all working together in order to build equity and to right a lot of wrongs. And if I may, want to quote Malcolm X. Malcolm X once said, "If you stick a knife nine inches into my back and pull it out three, that is not progress. If you pull it all the way out, that is not progress. Progress is healing the wound, and America hasn't even begun to pull out the knife." I believe we have an opportunity here with Measure U and through this commission to not just pull out the knife, but really to mitigate any possible infections to the body of Sacramento and force it to actually heal and progress.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Joshua Robinson, and then Janelle Hope, and then Ebony A Harper. Joshua Robinson? There you are.
Evening.
Good evening. So, I'm here also to talk about Measure U and the establishment of a commission. So, I'm from Sacramento City College. I'm a student at Sacramento City College. The mayor recently came to Sacramento City College and spoke about Measure U. And when the mayor spoke about Measure U at Sacramento City College, he told a story of a third grader named Deandre, and he said when he met Deandre in the third grade, Deandre was two years behind his grade level, and he was closer next to homelessness. And he said that Deandre, as a third grader, two years behind his grade level, asked him, "Did the mayor have all the keys to the city?" And the mayor, in return, told him that he didn't have all the keys to the city. And so, I wonder, as a third grader, two years behind grade level, and practically homeless, what did he mean when he asked the mayor, "Does he have all the keys to the city?" What I would make an educated guess and say is that Deandre was asking, "Can you help me? Can you help me get to a better position than where I'm at now, as a third grader, practically homeless, two years behind my grade level?" Now, what this commission represents and the different types of people that we propose that we have on this commission directly affects some of the things that affected Deandre. So, we're talking about renter advocacy and housing. He was practically almost homeless if he wasn't homeless. Talking about trauma and mental health. There's a lot of different types of things that come with that. When you're almost homeless, when you're two years behind your grade level, mental health pays effect into that. And then crime. If you're homeless, you're close to the streets. You're seeing crime on a day-to-day basis. So, there's a lot of things up on this list that's in this letter that directly speak to Deandre's position. And so, I would hope, as a city council and as the mayor, that when we form this commission, we take Deandre into account, and we advocate for people to be on this commission that represent the interests of Deandre, and that will give Deandre the keys to the city that he was looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next speaker is Janelle Hope, then Ebony A Harper, and then Jane Manti. Janelle here? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janelle Hope, and I'm a resident of Colonial Heights. I'm also a student at the University of California, Davis. I'm really here to call attention and call out the city council members for proposing Measure U, but not putting any sort of accountability or community investment in that ballot language. And from our understanding, you all have until August 10th, so another week, in order to be able to work out the language before it comes up, the deadline that Jay Sheneer is mentioning. Measure U brings in currently half, half of Measure U funds currently have been allocated towards policing, right?
Yeah.
It's expected that Measure U, if increased to one cent, will bring in over $100 million in revenue and tax dollars. This is really a prime opportunity for the city to put its money where its mouth is, and that's what we're really hoping that you all can do by calling for this commission and with some community oversight. Currently, Measure U, over half of Measure U funds have been used to allocate towards policing and law enforcement budgets, supporting a police force that has caused deep trauma as well as threatened public safety of many of our communities by running over citizens, discharging lethal weapons into communities recklessly, and criminalizing homeless folks, as well as folks who are currently out in encampment of ICE. If Measure U was to pass again this fall, $100 million anticipated. We need to put that money towards services, programs, and communities that need it the most. In the wake of the city's blatant racism and disregard for its most marginalized, we need Measure U funds to go towards real and actual affordable housing, mental health, parks and recreational services, jobs, things for Deandre that Deandre would have needed, for youth that have come here and spoke tirelessly about just the dilapidated conditions of Meadowview, Oak Park, the parts where people still can afford to live, and all the other at-risk communities. So, please, we strongly ask that you consider the creation of a commission within the ballot language, because without so, it lacks teeth, and it lacks something that we really can get excited about, or something that we really can even support.
And Jane Manti. Ebony?
Okay. For clarification, it's Ebony Ava Harper, and I just want to say, history is happening right now. So, Ashby made a statement a couple of weeks ago when I was arrested by SAC PD. She said, "This is a progressive city council." That is a joke, because this council is more concerned about decorum than people.
Excuse me, do you have a comment about Measure U? Excuse me. No, do you have a comment about Measure U?
Yes, yes, I have a comment. I'm coming from a black trans woman's perspective, and I've been kicked, beat down, and dragged down to the ground, even in the city, and nobody on this council has spoke up for me. That's why with Measure U, I'm saying that there needs to be a trans person on a commission to allocate money to our community to get help for mental health services, for homeless services. This is city council, and there's a ton of homeless people that sleep out here every week. What are we doing for that decorum? What are we doing for the decorum of my community not having safe spaces in this, in this community? Yeah, anyway. So, I want to see a commission, and oversight commission, and I want to see a queer or trans person on a seat to get money to our community. And thank you for giving me enough time to explain where I was coming from.
Thank you for coming.
Next speaker is Jane Manti, then Jeffrey Tardaglia, then Conrad Crump.
Manti, welcome.
Hi, y'all. I'm here today on behalf of the Sacramento Tenants Union. Sacramento's in the midst of a housing crisis, and our officials have done little to nothing to build new, publicly-owned and affordable housing to keep up with the city's needs over the past couple of decades. Instead, you all have opted to use our $30 to incentivize the private housing industry, which only cares about profiting, not housing people. While the mayor has stated he would to use Measure U to fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we do not have the confidence the city council on their own can make appropriate and equitable investments on their own. Steve Hansen this morning, or early today, stated he was apprehensive about past spending of city councils, and so are we, about right now. If you don't want our support, well, the support of tenants, we're highly recommending that you please adopt the Measure U Investment Commission language proposed already to you all on how you will spend the Measure U money. I got extra time. And so, I have free time here right now, a minute. I'll just add on that, as Reckman said, you all have time to do this. I know it feels like you have maybe a couple of days to do it, but you don't. You have more time. Deadline is August 10th. You can pick up this language, put it inside the Measure language, and give the folks something to vote on. I heard before that Jeff Harris, where he's at on this side, is apprehensive that folks won't vote for this, but if you put this language in there saying that you want to give the community a say, a voice, in how the money is spent, people will respond. If you have a commission that is equitable, that represents people who are on the bottoms to have a voice, people will respond. So, give us that voice. You have time, add in the language before August 10th. Give us a shot. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Tardaglia?
Good evening, board. Do I, Mayor, I would like a clarification with the city attorney in regards to, I'm looking at Measure U, and I'm looking at public comment on the voices I filled out because it was unclear how many of them directly dealt with the issues of Measure U. I would like my public comment in there for number eight, number seven, and number four, which I'm talking about right now, and public comment not on the agenda. Just ask for that clarification, because otherwise, it seems like you, per what you've offered in here, like the consent docket of combining things, you really need to clarify what items, when you say an item, versus a subject, when you have this type of division on a single subject matter. But for the board, I'm looking for here is accountability, and it seems like, when was the last time Measure U funds explained exactly where all $40 million went? So, before you try this, as you can gather, like I on Sacramento, it seems like you put out a lot of, shall we say, verbiage, and I still haven't even heard you say whether you're looking at a half percent, or I know you want 1%, but really the terms of what it's going to be, current, or whether it's going to be expanded, and making sure that it's not going for pension funding, and it's not being coming 20% of the city's budget. Those are my concerns, and I bring those to your attention, that please, as you have this conversation and talking, and willing to talk further about this, but I think it's important, if you really want to Measure U fund to go forward.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Our next speaker is Conrad Crump. Calling Mr. Crump is Kalil Ferguson, then Jatton Stevens.
Good evening, city council members. Mayor Steinberg, just very plainly speaking, very candidly, we want investment in Measure U, and we would like to have that Community Investment Commission on how that funding is spent. Angelique Ashby, because it is apparent while you're having a sidebar conversation that the council is unable to effectively spend that money in the way in which it should go, just being very straightforward with you. We have 0.3% going to community investment, and nearly 45, almost 50% going to police, which has terrorized our communities for decades, for centuries. And with that being said, I come standing on the shoulders of my ancestors, Mr. Harrison Crump, who the city council has, I heard someone talking about giving the keys to the city, or does he have the keys to the city? The mayor, former mayor, gave my grandfather a key to the city, and before his demise, he was concerned about those members of the community. With that being said, I would like to just say that, with that being said, ultimately, we need individuals on the city council, as well as the nine seats of the commission, to be able to be capable, to be culpable, and to be able to be accountable for every dollar that is spent, every single dime. With that being said, we can show a track record of how the money has been sent. I know I got 30 seconds, but when the mayor is allowed, even though you weren't here physically, this is your watch, this is your call. When the mayor is allowed to have people, Steve Hansen, to allow people to come up and blow whistles at black people who are organizing, to blow dog whistles at people who are disrespecting those of us who are trying to actually have a conversation with you in a civilized manner.
Mr. Crump, your time is up.
I'm asking you, Mrs. Steinberg, it's not okay. And I'm telling you, it's not okay. I know my time is up, and respectfully, I need you to understand where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Crump.
I hear you.
That two minutes is quick.
I hear you.
Our next speaker is Kalil Ferguson. Kalil, I apologize. Jatton Stevens, and then Jamar Jefferson.
Good evening, city council. My name is Kalil Ferguson. I'm a recent SAC state graduate. I graduated with my degree in political science and economics. If we study how economic revitalization for black communities has affected us, it has been detrimental to the black people and marginalized people in that case. We currently see that in Oak Park and Del Paso Heights and parts of South SAC. Here is your chance right now to invest in our community. Like Brother said, the last, within the last budget, 0.3% of that was spent on community investment. How much of that really went to the black community, or many a marginalized community for that fact? So, with that being said, I propose this nine-person council. This nine-person council, this Oversight Committee, with a responsibility and power to formally provide direction to city council about how to allocate and put annual Measure U tax revenue. City council, you do have time to put this in the legislation. This is your chance to invest in the marginalized community. The black community has suffered economic vitalization at the hands of capitalism with regards to gentrification. I'm sure you guys are very aware of what gentrification is. Like I said, this is your chance to invest in the black community and marginalized communities. We are becoming homeless. We are becoming displaced because of gentrification, economic vitalization in our own communities, and yet, we are going unheard as history continues to perpetuate itself. So, please, city council, please put this into legislation, into the legal writing for Measure U going on the ballot in November, and please keep in consideration the black community and how we are affected by the lack of economic vitalization in our own communities. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jatton Stevens, then Jamar Jefferson, then James Battles. Jatton?
Good evening, council and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Jatton. My name is Jatton Stevens. I am a resident of Sacramento in District Four. I'm an attorney in our community who represents youth, and I'm the current president of the Greater Sacramento Urban League Young Professionals. And I am joining in the request today that the city council adopt the proposed Measure U Community Investment Commission. Since the tragic killing of Stephon Clark in March of this year, it has been made clear by the Sacramento community that business in this city cannot go on as usual. For two long, significant segments of Sacramento have been neglected and left out of the growth and development of the city. A Measure U commission provides an opportunity for this city council to demonstrate that it is serious about upholding the promises that were made after the Stephon Clark tragedy. We are asking that the city commit today to including a nine-member Measure U Community Investment Commission in its draft of the Measure U ballot, ballot measure, and give the community a voice in how our tax dollars are invested in our community. Thank you.
Jamar Jefferson, and then our final speaker is Jane Battles. Mr. Jefferson.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, everybody. The national debt is $21,297,000 and counting, as last I checked, and we're talking about a new tax. Overtaxation is the subject an excess burden or strain to tax in excess to what is considered appropriate or just. No more taxes, we need less taxes. The people should vote this tax down and require that the city be held responsible. If this tax is to pass, we need, in exchange for it, the increase in taxing the general population, free model, and effective transportation. Everyone will benefit from free public transportation. Any tax that takes money out of your pocket makes you more dependent. We need jobs for homelessness. Fourth Forest, Texas, is doing a great job with this. People have to work and need jobs and transportation to those jobs. They are all happy to distract the voters with false promises of community input and how they spend the money on how to improve your life. If you do, give our grants to entrepreneurs. We have enough commissions. We need 25% to 50% of Measure U funds going to entrepreneurs. If 25 to 50 million in grants every year to at least 25 people, that is community building. I'm asking for the money to go to people who look like me. People need to learn self-governance and promotion of the Republic of the United States and defending of the Constitution. What we talking about right here is no more commissions, we need less taxes, right? People need to be held responsible. We're talking about the crash of the American economy. Do y'all not understand this? And you're talking about increasing tax. You need to take less pay, you need to be more responsible, physically responsible, and live like the rest of us, because when this crash, it's gonna be bad. We don't need more police spending, we need people to learn how to fend for themselves. And you need to defend people's rights. Once again, self-governance. Black people, learn and do for yourself. Quit depending on these people to do anything for you. Y'all good.
Our last speaker is James Battles.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. After the tragic and, in my opinion, avoidable shooting of Stephon Clark, our city erupted in nearly daily demonstrations that oftentimes blocked traffic. I know because I think I was in every traffic during each protest. The first time, I was returning from Seattle when traffic was stopped on I-5. Then it happened again and again. Golden One Center was closed, and it seemed like the mayor and the council were losing control of the situation. And while I sympathized with the initial protests, I was curious why the protesters did not take the protest to the Capitol Building or City Hall. My question was, why were they continuing to block traffic? I was frustrated, and I believed, I called and voiced my frustration to a couple of members of the city council, I know Mayor Ashby and Mayor Steinberg, a couple of city council members. Please let me finish, please let me finish my point. But then I was caught, but then I was caught in what was a very large protest on I Street.
Excuse me, let the witness testify. You need to get, you need to get to Measure U, though, sir.
Traffic was stopped. I put my car in park, and I rolled my window down. As I looked into the eyes of...
Please let the gentleman speak.
As I looked into the eyes of the young black men and women who passed by, it's...
Black men and women?
Excuse me, excuse me. You shout out one more time, I'm going to ask you to leave. You've been warned by, you were warned by the vice mayor, you're now warned by me. One more time, you're going to be asked to leave.
As I looked into the eyes of the young black men and women who passed by, it's like a light went on, and I saw their pain. What I saw was uncertainty and the pain with the resolve in these young protesters. I put my hand out the window, and every person who walked by hit the palm of my hand in solidarity. A young man thanked me. Nothing I had done was worthy of his thanks. In fact, I was guilty of not stopping long enough to look and listen to how deep their pain was. While I've never been charged with any crime, I've spent the night in a drunk tank after getting my butt kicked by a police officer.
Sir, what is your point on Measure U here? You've got 12 seconds.
I'm getting, I'm getting to my point, Mr. Mayor. I'm getting to my point, please. After an ACL replacement, I healed, no animosity towards the police or the deputy. But I certainly realized if I were a black man, I would have been dead. Mr. Mayor, I support...
If you're a black man, you wouldn't be speaking.
I don't know, I don't know who that is.
Really wouldn't be speaking.
I don't know, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Harper, you are warned as well. One more outburst, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
Okay. Thank you. I'll cover off.
Mr. Mayor, I support the expansion of Measure U, but I encourage you to sit down with the leaders of the African-American community, African-American educators, and let them tell us what their needs are to help our young African-American community. It's not right for us to tell them what they need. It's time to see and hear their pain and help them with the resources they need. Our African-American brothers and sisters need to know that our community respects their human dignity. We will stand in solidarity, and we will give them the resources they need to succeed.
Thank you. Thank you for testimony. Those are the speakers on this particular item, on item four. Let's now take it to the city council for debate and potential resolution here. I'll begin with...
Oh, shut up. You're not gonna talk.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I feel very upset.
Let's maintain quiet, okay? And respect for one, and respect for one another in the chambers, okay? Please. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to talk fairly briefly. I think we had a good discussion this afternoon about this. First of all, I wanted to address something Mr. Tardaglia said. Measure U dollars are discussed at length in our budget process every year, and it laid out how they're spent to the last dollar. So, that's a place you can go if you want to take a look at that. We also have an audit at the end of the year that takes a look to make sure that Measure U dollars were spent in accordance with the ballot proposition itself. So, all of that is public information. I think, and we've talked about this in a lot of different ways, I do think this is a pivotal time for the city. We've done a lot of good things. I think that going out and investing in our communities and our neighborhoods is absolutely the right thing to do and imperative for the sustainability of the city and our long-term success. And particularly for me, as you all know, investing in our young people is of paramount importance. I want to talk about, just give two examples of why I think this is so important. First of all, we have a program called Summer at City Hall. Mr. Gera and I attended the graduation yesterday. So, Summer at City Hall is a program that we had 78 young people who were new to the program and 10 returning youths, 78 juniors and seniors in high school in the city representing the full demographic of the city, who spent six weeks in city hall, learning about leadership, learning about local government, and getting five units of high school credit, and then also at the same time earning a $350 stipend. But what we saw last night with the 78 young people was them putting on a program over at the library-galleria. It was really wonderful to listen to them and listen to how much they've learned about how the city operates so that they can become really meaningful and engaged citizens. And we need our young people, as we've seen across the country, to really have their voice in what we do. That program is funded not entirely, but a good portion of it by Measure U dollars. And to be able to continue to do those types of programs for our young people, to me, is one of the most important things that we can be doing. We have so many young people who don't have those opportunities. This is about 100 young people. We have in our thousand-strong, about 300 or so last year. In our lighting and landscape district, those jobs are, I think, 270, 280. That's just a small, small percentage of the young people who need both learning and jobs that we can provide at the city with the proper resources. So, I think Summer at City Hall, which really has become a model program and has been now replicated in 14 cities across the state of California, those are the types of things that we can be doing, where we're not just providing jobs, we're not just providing a safe place, but we're providing those things along with leadership opportunities and engagement in our processes. The second example, which is kind of at the other end of the continuum, is Aggie Square. So, Aggie Square is the potential for UC Davis to open up a satellite campus over in the Med Center area. The potential there is fabulous, up to 20,000 jobs, and those jobs, as we have discussions in partnership with UC Davis, should be primarily local. But what we need to do is really have our workforce development folks work with our schools, which we're trying to do in the Oak Park area, and make sure that all of our young people, as they grow up, have the opportunity and the skills and competencies to be able to get those jobs. I think that in working with UC Davis as a partner, we'll be hopefully also investing in that, investing in those jobs, investing in the training of those young people. Every year, we take about 120 kids from Oak Park Elementary Schools over to UC Davis for, just to, excuse me. I don't think I interrupted any of you when you were speaking, so if you can give me the same respect, I would appreciate it. So, every year, we take those young people to UC Davis to show them what the thousand different jobs can look like, and we know that there are 13,000 employees currently at UC Davis. If we double that through Aggie Square and make that local development, and really train our young people to be able to get those jobs, everyone wins. We do have gentrification in Oak Park, there's no question about it. The way that we can get at that is really through, I believe, through education, so young people grow up with...
Excuse me, the gentleman in the black t-shirt, I know what you're up to. One more time, one more outburst, and I'm going to ask you to leave. One more outburst, I'm going to ask you to leave. Show some respect.
So, what we're really trying to do here is provide resources so we can invest in neighborhoods like Oak Park and neighborhoods like Meadowview and continue to do that in neighborhoods like Del Paso, where the need is greatest. And so, that's where my support is, that's where it will continue to be, and I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this at one cent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to the public who came tonight. You gave us a different perspective than some of the people we heard from earlier today, but I think you also added to many of the things we heard earlier today, particularly the letter we received emailed from Flo Koffer and then Sadalia you presented, I think is extremely helpful proposal, as we look at targeting revenues to disadvantaged neighborhoods or priority neighborhoods, as we've called it before. And I'll wait for the city attorney to tell us whether or not we can make this change tonight or not. Madam City Attorney, I believe we heard from the county that, well, statutorily, there's another week, they are not giving us another week. Is that, is that part of why we can't make an amendment?
The process for, since this is an ordinance, it would have to come back to the council for consideration, which is typically what you would do with an ordinance. And so, that makes it difficult because you have a very tight timeframe already, since it does have to go, have to come back to the county by the 10th. You do have a Citizens Oversight Commission already part of this ordinance that would be adopted as Measure U, and the scope of that committee is prescribed by council resolution upon adoption, and you could actually adopt that scope prior to the vote in November, if the council wanted to approach it in that manner.
And Madam City Clerk, is there, is there any other information you think is relevant with the deadlines that we've been given by the county registrar?
Yes, our next scheduled meeting is on August 9th. So, if we did move this to August 9th, that would condense our period for arguments for or against significantly, so there would be one day to provide those arguments for and against. So, those need to be turned into the county no later than August 10th, and then the rebuttals will then be due on August 20th.
Vice Mayor, can I just ask one clarifying question on the same subject? There's also a significant limitation in terms of the ballot language itself, in terms of the number of words that you can use. And what is, what is in there already is up to the very maximum, as I understand it. So, adding a full paragraph or even sentence, a long sentence, would go beyond the allowable words on the ballot measure that we are afforded under state law. Is that correct?
And as our city attorney mentioned, we do have a Measure U Oversight Commission.
No, I'm just asking, I'm just asking that question in terms of the number of words.
Yes, the ballot question has a prescribed number of words, which is 75, and I believe we're right at 75.
We're right at 75. Okay, thank you.
So, I think that was a little bit of jargon, but because when we put something on the ballot, we ask for arguments in favor, and voters can write those, or they can be done by the council. Same with the opposed, there are statutory timelines. And right now, if we adopt this tonight, we give the proponents and opponents who wish to file ballot arguments enough time to write those. If we wait one more week, the proponents will have one day, the opponents will have less time, I think statutory minimum is nine days or 10 days.
So, the statutory minimum for rebuttals is 10 days.
Okay, so that puts us right up against the very end. So, it is very tight, and I think that, you know, this is, this is absolutely as close to the last minute as we could be doing it, which is not fun. And I made some comments about how it'd be nice to have more time earlier today, but one of the things I want to commit to is working, whether it's with other council members or directly with the coalition, on crafting an ordinance to create this commission for the city. And I want to make sure that we set a minimum amount of revenue to dedicate to those neighborhoods, whether it be 20% or a minimum of 20 million annually, to be able to be directed by that commission. It's known as participatory budgeting, and a lot of other cities have used it very well to engage the public and the community, and I think you've given us a very thoughtful recommendation, and I'd like to help make it happen. And then to the question itself, Mayor, we talked at length earlier today about the half-cent versus a cent, and I think the arguments, I think that the public deserves a chance to vote on the proposal that you've brought to us, Mr. Mayor, this November. If we only renewed at half-cent or even three-quarters of a cent, I believe that the people who want us to be able to invest in neighborhoods that have been disadvantaged would be disappointed because of the requests of CalPERS, city debt, and city compensation costs, that there'd be very little left to be able to make those strategic investments. That being said, I still think, given a potential recession, there could be very thin budgets that could also limit those resources, but I want to, I want to help see what we can do to invest in those communities.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it very much. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we did have a rather exhaustive discussion this afternoon, and I addressed some of my concerns. I don't think it is a given that a one-cent Measure U will pass. I've had many discussions with voters in my district who have told me that they do not have an appetite, and there is a specific reason for that. This is a general-use tax, and we cannot tell people how we will spend the revenue that we will acquire by taxing them. So, that creates a lack of trust. We can't guarantee you what this money will be spent on. There is another alternative, and we could change the ballot language to offer this at three-quarter cent. So, obviously, that's just an uptick of a quarter cent. What that would do is bring our aggregate tax rate back to 8.5%, which is the rate that we have been paying for the last six years since we passed Measure U originally. So, in essence, because the state retired a quarter-cent tax, we get almost for free, you might, you could look at it... you might, you could look at it that way, we would gather enough money to cover our CalPERS obligations moving forward with some extra cash to spend as well. Additionally, we are going to gather more tax revenue, it's been increasing year over year, and we haven't even talked about potential revenues from cannabis, which we've all worked very hard to get. I think...
Excuse me, sir, 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 you cannot, you can't shout out from the audience.
No, 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 you don't get to shout out from the audience, sir.
You can't shout out, sir.
You've had a chance to speak, I haven't.
You spoke, you spoke very well before, but if you shout out again, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
I'm trying to understand what he's saying.
Well, you can't, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to ask you, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
No, he has to listen.
Excuse me. Okay, but you can't interrupt from the audience. The Assistant City Manager here would be glad to, would be glad to have a conversation with you right now, on the side. That's the last time.
Yeah, get your damn officer off of the case.
Excuse me.
He's threatening him.
Excuse me.
Our Assistant City Manager will be able to explain to him the nuance of what I'm discussing. Basically, what I'm saying is that I perceive a fair, a substantial amount of risk that the voters will reject a one-cent Measure U, a doubling of the tax. If that happens, that leaves us in a very difficult position of going back to the voters with an emergency election next spring to try to recover our half-cent tax. And if we went that route and without an uptick of at least a quarter cent, we would not be able to cover various pension obligations that face us in the outlying years, and we have structural deficits that we need to recover. There's another piece. If we did adopt this at three-quarters cents, I think that our chance of the Sacramento Transportation Authority being able to float a tax in the future for roads and transportation is greatly heightened. And with a very strong possibility that SB 1 will be repealed, that could put the city in very dire straits in terms of meeting our basic services. Taxes are regressive, they hurt the poorest people the worst. This is not an issue of whether or not we can do good things with extra tax revenue that we can gather with the one-cent Measure U. In my mind, it's whether or not that tax item placed on the ballot will pass. I think that we have a better chance of passing this measure if it's offered at three-quarters cent, and so I would like to make a motion that we change the ballot language to offer this at three-quarters cent rather than a full doubling at one cent, because I believe it has a much greater chance of passing, and it will solve a lot of issues. It gives us extra spending money, but it also helps us resolve our structural deficits moving forward due to our CalPERS obligations. So, Mr. Mayor, that is my motion.
That is the motion, and you're looking for an up-and-down vote on that, on that motion.
To change the ballot language to three-quarters cent rather than one cent.
Okay, is there a second? Before we get to Councilmembers, so here's what I'm going to do, and this is, I suppose, the risk, but I know what, I'm going to give you a courtesy second, if you want it. I'm going to give you a courtesy second. I'm going to give you a courtesy second, so that you're...
I appreciate it.
So much can be heard, and I'm going to vote against it and urge my colleagues to vote against it, obviously, because I have a different, I have a different proposal. But I want to, this is, this is good, solid, constructive dialogue and democracy, and I want to make sure that you're...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the courtesy, and as I've said, I think it's the more fiscally prudent manner to proceed.
Let's call this, is it okay if we call this question right now?
I want a parliamentary procedure, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Normally, I think what we do is we'd finish the debate. If there was a second motion, that would be a substitute, the substitute would be voted on first, and then the original...
That is, Jeff, that is another way, that's right, that is another way to do it, whatever you prefer. I'll give you the courtesy second under either circumstance. In other words, to make the main motion for the one cent, and then you make a substitute after the debate, we vote on that.
That's a more normal procedure.
Are you okay with that? Why don't you withdraw that? Let's finish the, let's finish the members, we'll take the main motion, and then we'll conduct our business, okay? Good.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, for me, I disagree with my colleague from District 3. And for me, the clear action for the city council is to move forward on this item. And also, with clear direction for the city to come back on a resolution to create a community investment commission. And the way I see this here, Mr. Mayor, is that if we do not be aggressive with this one percent, if, or one cent, and if we maintain the current status quo, and when a recession comes, and it will come, and we've all been seeing and preparing that it will come, I recall when we had the last recession, those who weathered the storm were those with means. And if we don't do everything we can to control the future of our own destiny and to invest in some of our areas and communities where the small businesses are from our local residents, then those without the necessary means are going to suffer. I'll tell you, from my own personal experience, I saw my own mother lose her house because of that. She was a small entrepreneur at the time during that experience, and if we don't help those communities right now, invest and create and help them control their own destiny and help our own city control our own destiny, I predict that our city, those without the means, will not be able to weather the storm again. I believe that if we do this more aggressive approach, and we're critical, we're critical of ourselves and our staff on how that money is used, and if we actually use the money to invest in corridors like on Stockton Boulevard, on Del Paso Boulevard, on Franklin Boulevard, you know, and we help the existing businesses. You know, many of the folks that I've talked to, the small business owners out in Stockton Boulevard, at least in my district, they're, you know, communities of color, folks who have basically, you know, gathered every little bit to start their own little bit, they don't have the money for these expensive land use attorneys to do major issues. I think we need to invest our city time and effort to help those corridors and to make that an area of prosperity. I feel that those are areas where we can actually truly build affordable housing with this one cent. I feel that if we focus on the basics, focus also on ensuring that we deal with illegal dumping, that we deal with making sure that our communities feel safe, I feel like our city is going to prosper even more. I feel that if we use this one percent to have a constructive workforce relationship with our schools, then we're going to be able to help our young kids become those entrepreneurs here in our own city. But that only happens if we have the bandwidth and breadth to do it. Staying at one and a half a cent, staying at three-quarters percent is like barely adding water to a plant where it barely stays alive but doesn't flourish. We need to commit to the communities that are hurting the most, because when the recession comes, and it will come, I think those are the ones that are not going to be able to weather the storm, and we're going to see gentrification again. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I want to move the item as we are. I think we have more work to do. I think our budget process, our budget process is something that we've increased our transparency, and I do want to commend our, I don't sit on the Budget Committee, but the Budget Not Committee has been more transparent since the first day I came on. I think there's more work to do on that, though, to have more citizen engagement, to make sure that, you know, all of the decisions we make by the time it comes to the council, that they have the backing of the community. And I think that if we can commit to that, we're not going to have a challenge in November. It's, there's going to be those who are going to be no all the time, but I'm here as a person of yes, yes, we can move forward, Mr. Mayor.
No, 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 first of all, excuse me, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Councilman by, second by, I don't know who was first. Councilmember Shanier. Councilmember Harris, do you want to make your substitute motion now?
Sure.
Okay, he's making a substitute motion for three-quarters. I'm going to give a courtesy second on that motion. Going to oppose it, but I want it to be heard.
I would like to make a comment.
You can, but not yet, because let's get, but, excuse me, let's get to, if you patch up again, would you?
I can turn it on.
What do I do?
I got you.
Okay, we got it, okay.
Click again.
Okay, I think I'm good.
One more time.
Okay, Larry Carr?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not a very complicated issue for me. The problem is clear. You can't look at the economic forecast and not see the problem. It's red ink all the way out. So that part is clear. The need is clear. Many people came up tonight and spoke about the needs in their community, and Councilmember Guerra spelled them out very explicitly. I do think we're going to have to work on the oversight issue and put it into an ordinance as we have done the Police Oversight Commission. That's an ordinance, that's the way we normally work it. We don't normally put that type of thing in a ballot measure. The issue that we've been debating today is whether or not to go in for a one-cent sales tax, sales tax, a half a cent or three-quarters of a cent. And much of this discussion has kind of pivoted around what will pass. There's been some polling on this issue, and the polling indicates that one cent will pass, notwithstanding personal comments, conversations that we might have had. But the polling was taken from a cross-section of people across the whole city. I think, and I had the opportunity to review the polling as well, and I'm satisfied that the majority of the community, when polled with the question about one cent, says, yes, I will support that, to get those items that have been cited. But it's still going to take some work. I think if this council works together, we all campaign on it, we all help, I think we can pull this across the finish line. And fortunately, it has been proven that I'm sitting here with the best campaigners in the city of Sacramento. I know you're the best because you won. So we can pull this across the finish line, I'm firmly in support of the one cent.
Thank you very much, Councilman Carr. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to repeat a couple of things that I said in the earlier hearing today, want to agree with my colleagues, Councilmember Carr and Guerra. I think we are on the same page on this one. I don't think there's any question, I agree with you, Councilmember Carr, it's not a tough question for me either, thinking about how we could use one cent. The frustrating part about being on this council is hearing people want things, and it doesn't, this stretches across just in this room or in your community, doesn't matter if it's, you know, potholes or libraries or police or programs, we never have the funding to do all of the things that we want to do. And Measure U creates a real opportunity for us to do a better job with our baseline services, to focus on essential services, to be good at parks, to be better with things. You said earlier today, Councilmember Carr, that, you know, this council made an investment in your district uniquely to open your pool later hours and to open your library later hours, because we saw a need in that district. But I want that in all the districts. I want all the districts to be able to have later pool hours. I don't even have a pool, so I'm not talking about myself. But, you know, the districts to have later hours, for kids to have more things to do, to have more youth programming, to do a better job, for people to be safe. And for me, in the new growth area, a lot of times, people look at my district as the entity that provides funding into the trust fund, whether it's Greenbrier or Panhandle. That's never going to be enough money. So if we take some of the Measure U money and we're able to put it into a housing trust fund and then match that up against statewide dollars, we will actually be able to do some things that we used to be able to do with redevelopment dollars. And that's very exciting, because we need housing in our city, and this would give us a mechanism to actually be able to do it. I'm interested in parks and libraries. I promised Councilmember Warren I would talk about this. We definitely want a full-service library in Del Paso Heights. We don't just want a library, we want a library that's melded in with the rest of the community, where people can go to get jobs and where there's childcare and where there's a lot of activity. And we're halfway down the road on that, but it's going to require funding to get done, because the library budget is slim, and yet highly needed in that community and in my community and everywhere. So I want to be able to serve people. There was Stephanie Nguyen, who many of us know, who does a lot of work with Asian Resources here earlier this afternoon, and she used the line that she eats, you know, workforce development for breakfast, because it's all she does. And, you know, that's what I want, I want to empower people like Stephanie to go out and get more folks in the workforce development program. I want to help our animal shelter, I want to do a better job with illegal dumping in District 2. You know, I want to be inclusive. We've been able to put together some packages to try, right now, try to recruit Fortune 100 companies. I want to continue to do that. I also want to be able to build our own, take our own small businesses and turn them into Fortune 100 companies by investing in them. This would give us the ability to do that. So voting for the one cent is, I think, an easy yes for me. This is the first time I've seen the letter from Sedalia and the group. The measure itself that's coming forward does have the Oversight Commission in it, but I think this is a good idea, to have some advisors who give us concepts and input and concrete information for us to work with. But it can't be included in the language tonight. And just to be clear, because our council meeting is on the 9th, and I've worked pretty hard on the timeline for this up to today, we actually wouldn't have enough time to come back on the 9th and change things because of being due on the 10th, our inability to deliver that. So I would suggest we take the city attorney's suggestion, and maybe between now and November, identify how we're going to create, by ordinance or whatever, some advisory groups that meet this goal. So in my opinion, I think we're off to a good start. I actually think we will get it across the finish line, and I think, you know, the safety of our people, which we said earlier today, is our number-one priority, and we can debate how we achieve that on the other side of the passage. But this is an important and really exciting moment for Sacramento to, for us to have some resources to do things, like Eric and I have been fighting for childcare centers, and this would give us a real way to make that happen, and I am excited to support it today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris, and I'm going to make a couple of comments, and we'll go.
So my colleagues have extolled the virtues of what can be done with the money gathered by one-cent Measure U, and I don't disagree with any of it. It offers possibilities moving forward. I simply perceive more risk that the voters could reject this. There will be a funded opposition to this ballot measure, and you have to be mindful of that. You will be asked, as taxpayers, in the near future, for utility rate hikes and STA and RT both, will be looking for a tax measure moving forward. You have to be aware that if, those measures will tell you exactly what the money is spent on. This measure does not. I see what I perceive as a more fiscally prudent way forward, and that is the motion that I've offered to present Measure U at three-quarters cent, because then I think that we can address our fundamental infrastructure issues much better moving forward. All of this being said, it's pretty clear to me at this point that the council will place one-cent Measure U on the ballot. And thank you, Mayor, for a courtesy second, I do appreciate it. And I appreciate you allowing me to air my concerns. If that is placed on the ballot, the mayor asked me earlier if I would, if I would be in opposition, would I campaign against it? And the answer is no, because this city needs to prosper. If we reject it, we are in a world of hurt, we lose it all. So this is, to me, I think, a high-stakes gamble. I don't like it, I'm a little more risk averse, apparently, than my colleagues. But nonetheless, we need to renew Measure U. Without our half cent, we're sunk. At three-quarters cent, we can get by and we can do a lot of good. At one cent, we can do ever much more good, but I think it has a good chance of failing. So you have my motion. The mayor's been kind enough to second, I'll call the question.
And it is a courtesy, thank you. I'd like to make some final comments. Oh, we got Councilman Carr, and then I'm going to close.
Just one comment before you.
Hey, Larry?
Undoubtedly, we're going to establish some type of Oversight Commission to help determine if we are spending the dollars in accordance with the plan. I would tell you, when we formed the Police Oversight Commission, I had a heck of a time finding a diversified group to apply. We were down to the, we were trying to get the commission to be about 50-50 male to females, we couldn't get females to apply, we couldn't get people from any of the other communities to apply. So I would urge you, if you are interested in this, contact your city council member and tell them you would like to serve on this commission, and apply. They'll tell you what the requirements are, and you can apply. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, was that, thank you, okay. Couple of final comments. Number one, you know, Councilmember Harris, I was happy to do a courtesy second, you're a good colleague and a great colleague, and you put out, you put out, excuse me, you put your point of view out earnestly and honestly, and I personally appreciate it, even though I disagree... If it fails, then vote for the one cent. That would be a unanimous vote, and it would send a signal that we, in fact, are all together here. So, that would be a request. On the one cent itself, I just want to, this is the document that I couldn't locate at the day it's here today, but now I have. I just want to, there's always risk, and there are no guarantees, but it's always risk and reward. And so, I just want to give some statistics here. The California has voted on 69 local revenue measures in 2016 and '17. Eighty-five percent passed, and 15 percent failed. Thirty-nine percent of the measures, 27 of them, asked voters to increase or extend the tax by a rate of one cent. Ninety-three percent passed, 25 of them passed. And so, I'm never overconfident, because this is about the people and their voice. But I feel strongly that the opportunity to invest in inclusive economic development is so paramount in our city that now is the opportunity. And my colleagues will indulge me just a moment. There are a lot of folks out in the audience who weren't here this afternoon, and I'd like to repeat some of what I said today, because I'd like them to hear it as well. When we look back upon our years together, I believe tonight, today and tonight, will be a day that we remember as the day Sacramento defined its future. And I talked this afternoon about an event I attended sponsored by Kaiser Permanente called "The Initiative for a Competitive..." Excuse me, could I please, could I please speak without being interrupted? I would sure appreciate it. Called "The Initiative for a Competitive Inner City." And what Kaiser is doing is they're investing literally well less than a million dollars in mentoring 50 small businesses, introducing them to capital, and providing the wraparound assistance that those small businesses need to grow and expand throughout our entire city. I say this, imagine what we could do to not only grow small businesses in our neighborhoods, but to attract and retain clean industries, to add thousands of jobs, to invest in affordable housing, in youth, in public safety, with an additional $25 to $50 million per year of investing in our people. And for some who might wonder, well, geez, what is the basic role, the most important role of a city? I want to be very clear. I think the most basic role of a city is to provide its municipal services. Leading with public safety, leading with public safety, but the whole wide range of services that we are responsible for providing. But what we're presented with tonight is a non-traditional but bold idea about how to fulfill that mission of providing those basic services. And simply put, the only way, over time, I believe, we will have the means to enhance public safety and enhance our core services is to grow a high-wage economy, to build more workforce and affordable housing, to prepare more young people in our neighborhoods for a growing economy, entrepreneurship, innovation. And until we put our own skin and resources into the opportunity to grow in the right way, yes, we will manage. We always do. And we will hope and try to find creative ways to grow out of deficits and the next recession. But I know this, we will also create ever more waiting lists for the public and private projects and the investment in people that we need, that we now just dream about. That has been the Sacramento experience, and that's what we want to change. This is an opportunity. And around accountability, I love the idea of as much citizen and resident input, especially from the communities we have heard from tonight, as possible. And to formalize that, and to formalize that in ways that are meaningful. Ultimately, it is the decision of the people elected by the people to determine how to spend the people's money. But your idea, the concept, and again, we want to work it through an ordinance, of a community, neighborhood-based commission that provides real tangible and formal input to the council as they make these investment decisions, to me, is right on. Business communities ask for something similar. There's no reason why we cannot increase our meaningful input, not decrease it. We're going to need it in order to get it right. So, thank you for a robust debate. Thank you to my colleagues for your patience, to the staff for all the work that has gone into this. Councilmember Ashby, I want to thank you. Councilmember Shenear. Jennings, members of the Budget and Audit Committee, who I was able to talk to about this, for all the intensive preparatory work that sort of went into this, and all my colleagues. I'm proud to serve with you tonight and always.
Mayor, before you take about a quick point of order as a request from the clerk and the city attorney, just to run, just to run through it really quick, no, no, that Jeff Harris made a motion, then withdrew his motion, then Eric made a motion, then Jeff made a substitute motion. So, we'll be voting on the substitute motion first.
Exactly.
Okay.
No, that's exactly what I, that's what I thought. I was, I got something, a little contrabed. That's exactly what I want. Okay. Councilmember Harris's motion is on the table for three-quarters cent. The chair urges a no vote. Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Guerra. Councilmember Shenear. And Mayor Steinberg.
No. Okay, that motion is defeated. Now, on the main motion, place one cent on the November ballot.
So, the motion on item number four is to adopt as recommended with one cent. Councilmember Ashby.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
Hold on.
Can I get clarification, because I think Mr. Guerra also provided direction for staff to come back and work on an ordinance to implement the type of commission. And that was, excuse me, included in my second.
That is clearly part of the motion. We're going to need recommendations about how to respond to the community, and how to put together the most inclusive, robust commission or commissions for advice. Absolutely. That's part of your, part of the motion.
Thank you.
Okay?
So, but we're passing an ordinance by two-thirds, adding Chapter 2.3.2.7 of Sacramento Code relating to a transaction and use tax effective upon voter approval, and passing a resolution approving a ballot measure text for placement on the November 6, 2018 ballot, and the direction is to staff to bring back.
Yes.
Approving those two ordinances and resolutions as proposed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Start over again, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Harris. Council, Vice Mayor Hanson. Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Guerra. Councilmember Shenear. And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
The item passes.
Passes seven to one. Very good.
Mayor, I just need to make sure that that included bypassing law and ledge, correct?
Yes, it did.
All right.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all very much. Exciting night for Sacramento. We move forward. Let's move to the next item, please. Who's presenting on the, on the city auditor item? Do we have somebody presenting on the city auditor item? I guess it fails for lack of a, lack of a presentation.
Mayor, can I get a clarification on Councilmember Ashby's comment? The bypassing law and ledges on these ordinances, not on the direction to come back.
Yes, we're passing the item as recommended.
Yeah, we'll come back. We'll follow the normal process, we'll formal the normal process on all of that. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, on the charter amendment for the auditor, seeing as how there's not staff to present, maybe Councilmember Ashby and I.
Why don't you guys, why don't, you guys want to go to the...
I don't.
Do it from up here.
Do you mind if I open?
Do it from up here. Excuse me. We still have business here. Thank you.
Mayor and council, earlier this year, Councilmember Ashby and I volunteered to help make an update to the charter, pertinent to the city auditor's office to include the auditor as a charter officer. This has long been something that we've discussed. It would add to the independent, and Jorge, feel free to come up to answer questions if you, if you like. It would add to the independence of the city auditor. The city auditor is a very unique role that often is put to, put in a role where it has to evaluate city departments, city leadership, and occasionally take very difficult positions on issues. We've also, because of our experience so far with the independent budget analyst, the council earlier this year directed that with the absence of the independent, with the vacancy in the independent budget analyst's office, we've assigned those duties to the city auditor. And after discussion, it seemed that for the most efficient government, in order to provide the most robust services, both through the auditor's office and to provide leadership to the independent budget analyst's office, we are presenting a proposal that combines the two, enshrines it in the charter. And then, I have two recommended amendments that I'd like to propose to the council that are minor, but I think advance that discussion further. I want to pass these to the clerk. Councilmember Ashby, before I talk about those amendments, would you like to?
Yeah. Why don't we?
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I was asked by the Budget and Audit Committee to take a look at the auditor becoming a charter officer, Mayor. And Councilmember Hanson had simultaneously been working on something similar, so we just joined up efforts and have pulled this together. The current city auditor was a part of some of those discussions in the early stages, and then the remainder of this was put together with the city attorney's office and Councilmember Hanson and myself. I'm sorry, Mayor, I can't hear you very well.
I apologize. What's, what, is this?
I don't know.
Okay, hold on. There's too much. Okay, hold on, hold on a second, please, Angelique. I'm sorry. Well, why don't we, why don't we get the, why don't we get the door closed, please? Harper, I need you to, if we could have some quiet in the chamber, please. If you engage in conversations, please step out, and you can come right back in. We just need some quiet in the chambers. Go ahead.
Councilmember Hanson and I had an opportunity to put together a few versions of what this might look like. He has brought forward, and I think you have in front of you, red-lined versions. On Section 3, the first red version, that item C, I actually do not agree with. But on, in the, in the Section 7, I wholeheartedly agree and believe we should push forward. There has been a lot of shifting around this item to make sure that we could put the auditor in a similar position to the existing charter officers. As to provision C, there is only one charter member officer who...
Ms. Ashby, do you mind if I present on that before we debate it? I mean, you can, yeah.
There's only one charter officer that has that authority right now. And so, if, the feedback that I had received prior to you joining me in this effort was that other charter officers would then want that modification too. So, I eliminated this from the earlier language. That being said, it's not a deal breaker. I could probably live with it either way. Happy to hear Councilmember Hanson's presentation on the item. But the item for me, coming back from the Budget and Audit at your direction, Mayor, is the item that is in the report today, that would make the city auditor a charter officer, and his duties would be very similar to the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city treasurer, slightly different in terms of oversight and removal powers from the city manager, which has a higher level of authority. But happy to hear from Councilmember Hanson, who, by the way, has been a fantastic partner on this. We've spent a lot of time on it and worked really hard. I also believe that the second, Section 7, is a very important change for us, because it will allow this council to annually prepare their calendars through resolution in whatever way is best fit. And you all have seen this year, as we struggled a bit with how best to handle that, this would clean that up a bit for us, and was great cleanup language actually provided to us by the city attorney's office, so we've included it. And I want to publicly thank Councilmember Hanson for being a great partner.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, Vice Mayor, just for clarity purposes, can you just describe the two amendments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. There's two minor amendments, and one of them is, I think, something that we've seen in other city auditor functions, which is a removal provision that has a slightly higher threshold, because our auditor is not, have a contract. And this was something that is a good governance item. We have one charter officer right now who has the same protection as Councilmember Ashby said, which is the city manager. But this is something I expect we can debate and talk about if the council has questions. But I made a commitment to our current auditor that I would raise this, because it is clearly important in how that office functions and the experience of other cities. The second one is really a government efficiency piece, to clean up some old charter language related to being able to set our annual agenda meetings. And so, I offer it up to the council. We have also updated the ballot question in consultation with the city attorney's office. And I'll make a, I'll just, for the purposes of debate, I'll make a motion that we adopt the charter amendment with the two changes, and advance it to the voters with the ballot question. And I can read that if the city attorney would like.
I think she put it up.
The ballot question is not up there, but we can put it up. Yep.
She's taking it right now.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I request that we do these separately?
Do what separately?
Section 3 and Section 7.
Two amendments. Okay.
Well, we have a motion and a second, so let's debate that, if possible, and then come back.
Okay. The motion and the second, though, includes the amendments, right?
I believe so. Mr. Guerra seconded my motion.
Okay. Okay. Let's, is there any public testimony?
I do have four speakers on the item.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the public testimony? They're here for the members. See if there's any substitute on this. Go ahead.
Thank you. The first speaker is McWorthy, then Lorraine Brown, then Jamar Jefferson. And I do have one speaker slip with no name.
Hello, Mr. Williams. On this charter amendment, to people, this has been a rig ever since it's been here. This is a rig. The charter was a rig. There's nothing I've seen yet, and I've got almost five years of agendas in my house that show that when the charter meets. Now, when we talk about voting, not one person voted a member on the charter. Now, you want to add a note. Nobody knows, attorney come in, you know nothing about the attorneys. Here's a clerk, you know nothing about the clerk. You know nothing about the city manager, but that's who got the power when they meet. When it's transparency between the charter people and the people. It's no transparency. It's a clique. That's what it is. It's a clique, people. It always have been a clique in this town. This time was designed as a clique. If you're in that little circle, you know. If you're not, to research the constitutionality, this would not ask the new attorney, that she would be underpaid, because she needed money to have outside research. You have nobody have the quality here as an attorney to do no research. All of them go falling the same line. Look who speak to the charter. Jason Air, Hanson, Ash. Y'all ain't no attorneys here. You're tricks. If you had the ability, you wouldn't even be here in the attorney field. But you're here, you already have discussed this behind closed doors, and now you come out and say, well, we're going to amend the charter. Where is the constitutionality of testing to amend the charter? What would be the advantage of amending the charter? Nothing. It's still a rig, people. It's a trick. It's a clique. I saw a person come in yesterday afternoon and saw me, she ran out. Wake up.
Our next speaker is Lorraine Brown. Brown? How about a microphone now, so she doesn't have to come up?
Excuse me.
Following Ms. Brown is Jamar Jefferson.
You're worn out, too, sir. Okay, you're out. You got to leave. You just, you just flipped me off. You got to leave. I'm sorry. You're out. Sorry, we can't, we can't have that kind of, we...
You pointed at him.
No, no. No, no, no. You can't, you can't yell out.
Don't shoot him.
Juve, you need to leave. Juve, you need to leave.
Don't shoot, don't touch him.
Don't touch him, let-- I'm asking--
I'm going to flip you off in the mouth, just let me stay.
I'm going to ask you to leave, sir.
Freedom of speech.
Wait, you apologize?
At forty cops knocking my eyes, harassing handful of--
To push people around--
You guys talk about money, you've got $2 million in cops to set them in today.
What?
Yes. Forty-five cops. To push down--
Yeah.
No, no apologies. Unapologetic.
Hey, can the-- Can the-- Can the-- Can the officer step away? Okay, thank you.
I don't understand.
Here we go. Okay. Okay.
Why do they get to come--
Fong Lee, Ms. Lee, stop it, please.
You're putting people at risk.
Please, please.
With guns.
Let us-- Let us continue.
Especially--
Let us continue. Let us continue. Next witness, please.
Okay. Lorraine Brown, and then Jamar Jefferson.
Hi, this is Lorraine Brown. And then Jamar Jefferson. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Brown has the microphone and is sitting there.
Okay. I disagree with my fellow witness over here for this reason. I think the auditor's position needs to be strengthened, and I think it's a good thing to have ad hoc instead of post hoc. As we know, when the auditor comes in and says there's a problem, it's very difficult to resolve it after the fact. So, I think having eyes, and I expect the auditor to be objective and professional. Up until now, he has been. Why wouldn't it continue? So-- I think it would strengthen the cohesiveness. I'm getting feedback here, it's very difficult for me to make this statement. And anyone that knows me and is informed knows I'm a psychologist, and I'm for all people--
They know where you are.
And I'm for all people. Blacks, green, white, red, Indian, whatever, yeah. So, anyone that-- so whoever's making statements, they're misinformed. But anyway, I think it would strengthen the position--
Fong, you guys see your last warning? Please leave the chamber. You continue to interrupt other speakers in the meeting.
He blew a dog's--
Fong, I'm sorry, this is your third warning, and you're done, please leave the chamber. Fong.
I have something to say.
Then behave and maintain decorum.
Yes, sir.
Please. All right. Ms. Brown, your time, you have 36 seconds, please.
So, in the past, as we know, and I'm going to speak, I think, on item 5. This is item 5.
Excuse me, sir. Let her finish her comments, please.
Unbelievable. It's important. I think special interests, medical, agriculture, has enough of an influence in this town. I agree with the speakers, we need diversity, we need entrepreneurs, and we need to meet the needs of the community, and let the community decide, not let special interests decide.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, your time is completed.
Well, so I think knowing-- Knowing that these people are being influenced, obviously--
Ms. Brown, your time is up. May we have your final thought? Thank you.
To disrupt.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Jamar Jefferson.
It appears Mr. Jefferson has left.
I do have one speaker slip with no name. Was there someone I missed?
Is there somebody that signed up but didn't put a name on their speaker slip?
I have no more speakers.
Seeing none? That concludes the public testimony.
No, no, no. I'm sorry, though.
On the city auditor item?
Awesome.
Okay. All right, that's okay. Councilmember Ashby, did you still wish to speak?
Yes, please.
All right, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you. Okay, so again, thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to bring this back. Again, as per the Budget and Audit Committee, I took a look at this, Mayor, at your request. This is our recommendation. However, I would like to make a substitute motion to Councilmember Hanson's motion that pulls out item C and instead moves forward in front of you the two amendments to the proposed ballot measure that make the city auditor full-time but without adding the additional removal piece for a vote of six members, and does add the cleanup language to the city charter for the council meetings. And we do have language drafted by the city attorney that we can put up if you all would like to see it as a substitute motion.
All right, there's a substitute motion and a second. Councilmember Carr? Oh, apparently he is now Mayor Steinberg.
Sorry, hi.
Yeah. Keeping the seat warm for D. 8. There is no term limit for District 8, Mr. Mayor.
It's not.
All right, Councilmember?
Decorum.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First of all, I have not discussed this issue with anyone. If there's a click, I'm not in it. I do agree that the city auditor plays a critical role, that he's in a difficult position, and that his position requires leadership. And Jorge, this is not personal. This is my philosophy on governance, and I really hate to disagree with my councilmember from District 1. I think a charter change is the worst possible way to govern because charter changes are so inflexible, and they tie the hands of this council and future councils. It gives them no flexibility at all. I personally think we should have as few things in the charter as we can and have everything else in policy that we can change as the council changes, as time changes, as circumstances change, as the situation change. Before we developed a policy on what the city auditor did, I might be more sympathetic to this because before we had the policy on what we were going to evaluate the city auditor on, it was pretty much personality and whim. But now we have a defined set of metrics that we are evaluating the city auditor on, and it takes all the personality out of it. As the city auditor sits at this moment, he has the full authority and backing of the city council. The city auditor can do and look at anything in this city that's not prohibited by state or federal law. If we adopt this charter amendment, he will have that same authority. The only thing that changes is if a circumstances arise when we thought we didn't need a city auditor, we would have to go back to the people, and that's an inflexible way of doing it. As far as I can tell, this charter amendment proposal does nothing for the functionality of the city auditor's office. It would still have the same functions, the same authorities, the same responsibilities, and all we've done is tie the hands of future councils. So, for those reasons, I would be voting no on this charter amendment change.
Mr. Carr, I'd just like to clarify one thing, and maybe that's why Councilmember Ashby chimed in. Right now, the independent budget analyst piece that we had wanted to clean up isn't in the charter already, and that we-- to clean that up, we do need a charter amendment. And it is-- Common Cause has looked at some of these proposals that we have, and they think that putting the charter, the city auditor in the charter, sends a strong signal to the public that that office is being protected and has more independence. So, I just wanted to offer that for you.
We have discussed this part before--
Yeah.
--and how that came about as a mechanism to sell Measure L. And it wasn't discussed as a functional, rational thing that we should be doing. So, what this council decided to do was take that budget analyst because he wasn't really needed. He was an excuse, a rationale for Measure L. We put him under the city auditor, and I think he can stay there, and I'd be supportive of a change to make that happen.
Larry, if I can just say, the city budget analyst actually was way before Measure L. It hadn't been funded, but the original initiative was--
Created in 2010.
Yeah.
2010.
2010. It had nothing to do with Measure L.
I understand the nuance of that. It was passed, it wasn't funded as a part of that whole discussion with Measure L, and council decided to fund it.
All right, Councilmember Gara.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think for me, the-- and I know that there's a little bit of dissension here, but the critical piece here is creating a charter officer and cleaning up the independent budget analyst and making sure that we have a functioning department that can give us advice on how we can be a stronger, better city and removing any potential politics out of that functionality. So, for me, that is the most critical point. So, while I do think that the-- maybe the six-member vote is good governance or, you know, a higher standard, I'm willing to support the substitute motion to move forward because I think the most critical part, and I can see there's some dissension there, is that we make this into a charter officer and that we clean up the independent budget analyst position and then have a clear role for that office. So, with that conversation, and I think I'm ready to move forward on this item here.
All right. With the substitute motion for Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you. I did just chime up to answer Councilmember Carr's question. Larry, I think you sized it up right. I don't think this falls in the wheelhouse of what you would do. So, it is for me, but I think you have sized it up correctly. You're right, it won't change his duties, other than it does provide the cleanup language for the budget, independent budget position. But what it does, and the reason I support it, and I don't expect to change your mind because I think it-- I don't-- I didn't expect you would support it, but I think what it does is it prevents a future council that says, we don't want to hear audits anymore, to get rid of the auditor. And I don't think that would ever-- I can't imagine ever that there would be a time in the city of Sacramento where it wouldn't be good to have an auditor that is overseeing what we're doing. So, really, this is just a good governance issue. You're right, it should have been-- it should have been part of the packages earlier. It wasn't, and so this is a bit of cleanup, but I would like to ask my colleagues to support my substitute motion to the extent they are willing.
And Mayor Steinberg.
There is, with the exception of Councilmember Carr, there's a strong, strong supermajority to make the charter and the auditor a charter officer. There's agreement there. There's division about whether or not there should be a two-thirds threshold to remove him. I personally would support the two-thirds threshold because I do think it provides some additional insulation. But if that's-- if that creates division here on that question, I'm prepared to vote for the substitute motion as well, just because I don't think you should give that additional protection with a divided council. May seem a little bit hard to explain, but that's-- I could vote for it, but it's-- I don't-- it would be a 5-4 vote to give him two-thirds, you know, two-thirds protection. I just-- let's do this as cleanly as possible where we have, if not unanimity, at least near unanimity, in my view.
All right, members, just remember with the substitute motion, we vote on that first. If that passes, then the original motion no longer gets voted on. I know Mr. Carr, I was just reminding people, and just because I was the maker of the original motion, I will support the substitute, but I think it's important that we debated it and that we give due consideration to the importance of the office. Mr. Carr?
I don't have any issue with the two-thirds or five votes, or whatever we want to come up with.
Can you get closer to your mic, please?
I don't have any question-- any quarrel with the number of votes because it's going to be very clear to us regardless of who the city manager-- where the city auditor is in the chain of command. If he meets the metric that we have established, we will evaluate him accordingly, and if he doesn't, he won't have any votes, that I could see. So, he'll either do the job or not do the job, as the same as all the other direct reports to the city council. I do think it's a mistake to pass a charter amendment with the sole purpose of tying future councils' hands. I really object to that. But let's vote.
One point that may help you, Mr. Carr, is that this still requires us to pass an ordinance that can be updated. While it does combine the offices, does do this, there will still be subsequent council action to update our current auditor ordinance that would give the future councils a chance to update. This just simply says that the council cannot do away with the auditor's office.
Right. And that's the part that I'm talking about--
Okay.
--tying future councils' hands.
All right. It seems like we're at the end of the debate. We have a substitute motion. We'll do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Ballot question?
We have an updated ballot question, I believe.
Make up the motion.
Yeah. Oh, she's got it.
Yep. I think just for the sake of it, we'll do a roll call. That's okay.
And if we can vote on the question, that will make our supporting documents all passed at once.
All right, the updated question is on the overhead for the record and for the council members, simply striking the removal provision.
There's also the other piece of it on the calendar.
Yeah, that's still there. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion, a substitute motion. We have a second from Councilmember Shenear, original motion from Councilmember Ashby, incorporating the ballot language. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Excuse me, you can't interrupt.
Can you be out of place?
Excuse me, you cannot interrupt.
Mr. Jefferson, I'm sorry, but this is not the time for you to ask questions. Madam Clerk, continue.
It's by name. It's by name.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember-- or Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Gara?
Aye.
Councilmember Shenear?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council.
I'm prepared to do these together if you want.
Thank you. We now move-- Looking for my agenda here. Here we go. We now move to item 6.
I'd like to move item 6. I could do that. This is, as you noted, a technical piece, so I'd like to go ahead and move it.
6 has been moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call on this, Councilmember Harris, or no?
They don't. Can I just read you the record? Item 6 is calling the election and giving notice of the placement of two measures. Of course, those two measures were just adopted. All the modifications that were approved in the last item will be incorporated into our resolutions.
I'd still like to move it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain.
The next is item 7, which directs the preparation of an impartial analysis for those two measures.
I'd like to move that as well.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
And again, those documents will incorporate any changes that you just adopted.
Okay, before we take a bait, I'd like the clerk to just take a moment, please, to explain the process under item 8 here in terms of who makes the decision. Does it have to be made tonight? How does that work so that the public understands, and frankly, so I understand as well?
Thank you. Item 8 is selection of argument authors for the two measures that we just adopted. That is a measure pertaining to the transaction and use tax, Measure U, and the Sacramento City Charter Amendment and City Code repeal regarding the city auditor. So, the council, by statute, has the authority to choose themselves as the argument in favor and/or against a measure.
Individual members or the council?
The council as a whole, and that gives them priority. So, the city clerk or the elections official chooses which argument for and against gets printed in the official voter pamphlet based on a priority order. If the council designates that they are going to write one or the other or both arguments--
And what if we don't do that?
If you don't, then it goes-- there's a pecking order, per se, on who the folks that--
Speaking of the mic.
So, there's a-- so, what we're talking about is choosing argument authors. So, the council has the authority-- the council has the authority to designate if they are going to be argument-- the authors of the argument in favor, the argument against, or they could designate both. So that gives them priority for who is chosen to be printed in the voter information pamphlet. The council does not have to take action. Should they not take action, there's designated priorities that those would do. For instance, a bona fide association, a resident, so there's an order on which I would choose the argument for and against authors.
Okay, so let me, so here's bottom line for me, just to be real honest about it. I would like the opportunity to consult with my colleagues and some of our supporters and have at least a few days to determine who should sign the ballot measures here. How do we facilitate that tonight?
So should you not make a decision this evening, and we go to August 9th, again, if you made a decision by 5:00 p.m. on August 9th, the argument in favor and against authors have until 5:00 p.m. on August 10th to write and submit that argument.
So Councilmember, Vice Mayor, do you have a suggestion?
Mayor, just because of the timeline, I'll talk about the auditor piece in just a second, but I think that what would be most prudent is if you wanted to designate the lead for the pro on the renewal and extension of Measure U, that would give you the ability to have extra time to put that together and still begin writing it. Otherwise, you have one day.
Okay, I would appreciate that, if that gives the most flexibility here, right?
If we designate you, then you and with your staff can do that.
And we can ask various stakeholder leaders to potentially sign the argument?
I believe you get up to five signatories on the initial, and then on the rebuttal, as long as you're on there, you can switch out those people.
Yeah, I would appreciate that ability, and like I say, I'll consult with you, but I just would like that flexibility.
So maybe I can make a motion, Mayor, designating you as the proponent of the renewal of Measure U. And as part of that motion, I've consulted with Councilmember Ashby, and I'd like to include us as the proponents of the auditor measure.
That's great. That works for me. Would it work for you guys? Let's hear from, okay, question, comment.
Just a comment. I'm happy to second that motion, having done this a number of times. I'm fine with this, if this is the way we want to move forward, but it's usually a good idea to have two people from this council assigned to each item. We one time made the mistake of only having one person assigned to something, and they did not get the item turned in in time, and because they were the only person on it. So Mayor, if you would like me to join you in authoring the Measure U renewal, I would. Here's what it means to you, though. If we're both on it, or any one of us is on it with you, then you have two signatures that are both on the argument, and they have to also be on the rebuttal. So you have only five slots that you can use, so that would mean your other three slots would be whatever other three community leaders you want. And then in the rebuttal, you can choose three different community leaders, so there can be, you know, a total of six additional people from the community to the two councilmembers.
I'd choose a member of the city council on my own if I'm the only one?
You could do that. The only thing is, if for some reason you weren't here, none of us would be able to submit an argument in your place.
I will be on this continent for the next week.
And the other thing you could do is you could choose many councilmembers, even if they're not already selected here. So let's say we just choose you, and you decide you want five councilmembers to be the signators with you, and two of the others on the rebuttal, you could do that as well.
Okay. I just would like some flexibility and just have the time to be able to consult without...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilman Gueda?
I think we all resolved that, but I was going to say, I trust you're going to be on this continent and in this state, so, and we'll give you the most flexibility, so...
Appreciate it. Right, I understand. And then for Councilmembers Hanson and Ashby on the auditor's position, that's fine. That's the motion. Is there, there's a second? Is there public testimony? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain.
Can I ask one question of the clerk on that? There are extremely specific rules on those, on the ballot language. Could you make sure that the designated authors receive that preferably today?
Absolutely. So, and to reiterate the motion, the proponent on Measure U is the mayor. The proponent on the auditor amendment is both Hanson and Ashby.
Correct. Okay, and that... So how is the no side chosen here, the representatives for the no side?
You could designate someone to write the argument, you could designate someone to write the argument against, or you could leave that to the immunity.
If, Mayor, there was a grand jury issue on this a few years ago, which is what Councilmember Ashby was referring to. If the council member or somebody who's designated does not fulfill it, it is a very big problem. So otherwise, if we don't appoint somebody, then it follows the process of bona fide organizations, then individuals, that the clerk...
Yes, I better show up to work the next day.
So there has been, in the past, a council member has written the argument against, but in the instance that we're talking about, the council member did not submit anything. And so the grand jury recommended that we do not do that again. That's correct. There are other...
As the proponent, do I select who gets to write the opposition for you? No, that's done by the clerk.
You could do it now. If you don't do it now, then it would be the community decides.
Community decides, okay. I prefer that the community decides.
Mayor, unless Councilmember Carr would like to write it, if he's asking to write it, then I'm happy to make a motion, giving him the authority to be the author...
Second measure.
Opposing the auditors.
Okay.
I do, Mr....
Okay, got that.
And Mr. Mayor, do you have a few speaker slips on this item?
We just voted on it.
Would you like to hear from these folks?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We just voted on it, but now there's another...
You have not voted, you have a...
We didn't vote.
You have a motion in a second.
Motion in a second. We haven't voted, let's hear the public testimony.
So we're taking testimony on six, seven, and eight. McWorthy, Jeffrey Tardaglia.
I don't mind being denied. I've been denied because I'm an independent Negro. I'm not one of those houseboys. But anyway, on this measure here, you spent 600 million plus 900,000 plus in attorney fees and bypassed the vote to build a arena. Only created 60 jobs with the minimum wage. Other time you asked for tax, it was the police department. Where was the night dance in the neighborhood? Oh, that's gone. Let it go. You ain't going to create no jobs here. Understand, people, whatever come upon tax, voted down in this city for the next 10 years because you are being pimped by this town. You'll not get anything out of this. You sit here and talk about sales tax, young folks to go into business. If you don't have rental property in this city or in this state, you will fail. Entrepreneurs or nonprofits, it's parasites. You have to beg for your crown. Go independent equality. You don't need but 600 units in each area. Well-built, that's $1,500 a month for each of them, that's $900,000 of money income. You can do whatever you want to do with your neighborhood. Get away from this garbage. This here is diversity, diversity, yeah. People in this tax thing is a high-tech nation when a black man come to the table that speaks well for himself. Those that say aye to everything, that goes on, they don't have the knowledge of business. They don't have it, people, and black young people, you are not represented here in this city.
He called me the N-word in front of my daughter.
You gonna switch it up now, the police around you. Right? You gonna switch it up now, the police around you. Get the fuck out of here.
Hold on.
Beat your ass, you're the mayor. I don't give a damn on my crap.
And he was cussing at me.
Real shit, you gonna call me the N-word? You out your fucking mind. You don't do that to me, bro. I'm not one of these motherfuckers, fly-by-night motherfuckers. Seriously, you don't call me no N-word. Yeah, tell him what you think he said. Don't say that shit to me, bro. Daryl, I'm sorry, but he called me the N-word, and that's not true.
If that happened, that is, if that happened, that's completely unacceptable.
It happens to all people.
That happened, that is completely, if that, okay.
Why are you going over there to get that person?
Excuse me, I need you all to sit down now, please. I need you all, Conrad? Conrad, I need you to sit down. If that happened, that is completely unacceptable. I apologize. If it happened, it's completely unacceptable, and he's left.
I said it, he had to change his words.
It's complete, okay.
He said it three times. I heard it.
I didn't hear, I will say, that word...
But it only mattered if you hear it.
That word is completely unacceptable in any forum.
I'm sorry to interrupt the proceedings. I apologize for disrupting the meeting. That is not okay.
It is not okay. It is not okay. Okay? Let us continue.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Tardaglia.
Thank you for, because I had missed this eight because it was on the back of the page. So I appreciate the earlier comment of allowing me to speak to this eight when not speaking to six. But here I am, as the regard is, as the question is, this shouldn't have been at the last moment. And I will say to you, please, you know, leaving it like this, I hope that it goes through the review process that it normally should have gone through, to be sure that all of your things are corrected. Otherwise, again, when we go to the public comment, not on the agenda, we'll say, with the streetcar, with the other bit of funding, if you do not get Measure U dollars, this city is going to be in a world of hurt. And this started out being $25 million, and what it has evolved to now, where you are so dependent upon this and needing this. So this is my concern, and this is what I appreciate, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you get ready to put on the ballot. Thank you.
Okay, Conrad, please. I'm happy to talk to you as soon as we're, I'm happy to talk to you as soon as we're done. I know that, please, just let us, I'm happy to talk to you as soon as the meeting is done. Excuse me.
I need to...
No, no, no. Okay.
If he's saying I'm...
Okay. Please, Steve?
This city loves white people.
I'm not a goat, man. That's not okay, Daryl.
Why are your police always...
I go back to the California State Legislature from '98 with you. Come on, man, you know how I get down. That's not okay, Daryl.
Mic, get out.
Mic, get out.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any more public speakers?
I have one speaker slip with no name. Was there someone else that wished to speak that did not fill out a speaker slip?
I'll put my name on there.
Mr. Jefferson, we called your name on the previous item, but because you weren't here, do you want to speak now?
Yes, thanks, Mary.
Okay. Why don't you come up, because we weren't able to call you earlier. Welcome, Mr. Jefferson.
How you doing? First, once again, the creator, I ask for your forgiveness for not acknowledging the creator, because that's what we all going to need in the coming days. We're going to need the creators. And especially to my people, we need morality and unity more than ever. My concern, once again, with this Measure U. You're doing it all wrong, right? Nonprofits, different people in the community, they're dependent, like McWorthy is saying. If I was a police officer, I would be really concerned with, why isn't this tax specifically for me? Right? They're passing laws out there. I believe I spoke with someone, they need a thousand officers, there's 700. The problem with that is, we don't really need officers at all. We need the community to be built up. If I was mayor and I had at least four people, I got rid of four of y'all and I had control of this council, we would cut half of the fire department, we would cut half of the police department, rebuild this city like the kingdom of heaven. You don't have a homeless problem when you have 3,600 alleged homeless people and you got 14,000 empty units in this city. It's not a housing demand, it's a fabrication, it's fraud, just like that vote that happened. You must be in your seat, in your correct seat, when passing the vote. That's fraud, I'm looking to that. On top of that, you're not going to really invest in young people, you don't care about young people. You want them in prison. Hold, excuse me? Measure U dollars are funding police officers, is that my correct?
That is not the subject of this item. The subject of this item is merely the assignment of pro and con arguments for the ballot measure, not the substance of the ballot measure. So please address the subject of the item.
Okay, I'm addressing. Do I get my 10 seconds you just took?
Please continue.
Okay. If you're going to do a pro, do community members get to write this rebuttal?
Yes. You can submit an argument to the clerk, and you can be chosen to write a con argument if that's available still, if somebody else from an organization hasn't already submitted.
You didn't took 30 seconds of my time.
We paused.
Vote this bill down. If they can't be responsible with what they have, poor people been living off food stamps and minimum wage, ain't $15, you need about $25 to live in this city. Right? Vote it down. No new taxes. Whoever writes this rebuttal, vote no new taxes.
Time is up. Thank you.
No new taxes. Go, America, go.
All right. Madam Clerk, I believe that concludes the public comment. All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Ashby?
Just to clarify, I believe the motion, Councilmember Hanson was yours, right?
Yes.
Seems like it was a long time ago now. To, for you and I to be the...
And you were the second.
Right, to be the authors on the auditor.
And you would like a friendly amendment to incorporate...
And no opposition, and then for the mayor to be the author of the pro on Measure U with no opposition, and then I made a friendly amendment to offer Larry Carr to come in to write the opposition on whatever ballot designation is given to the auditor.
Yep.
Good with that, Councilmember Carr?
Good.
Okay.
Second accepts.
Perfect.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion carries.
Good.
That is our last item, now public comment, I believe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We now have public comment on items not on the agenda. Let us proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I do have some board and commission appointments. May I read those into the record?
Yes.
Thank you. To the active, so these are board and commission appointments. To the Active Transportation Commission, we have Jeanne Ward Weller and Rachel Carpenter. To the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee, Chris Shipman, Mark Smith, and Mike Scherff. To the Planning and Design Commission, Joseph Yee. To the Sacramento Youth Commission, Marjorie Schumate and Maya Steinhardt. Thank you. So I have 34 speakers for public comments not on the agenda. Your first speaker is Patrick Bankert. Wendell Brown, and Wendell is from the last meeting who didn't get to speak, if Wendell is here. Cynthia Kaye. So is Patrick here?
No.
No Patrick? I don't see. Is Wendell Brown?
I don't see Wendell.
Cynthia Kaye?
I don't see Ms. Kaye.
Hi. Gregory Galvenovich?
No.
Thank you. Juve Spooner?
Juve.
Thank you, Juve. Following Juve is Ika Spooner, is that you also, Juve?
Same.
Thank you. So following Juve is Armando Flores, and then Sally Shapiro.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We are now about to enter the fifth month since the last time I seen my best friend, my brother. There's a saying, sometimes when life throws you a fastball, you hit a grand slam. But in this case, still trying to figure out why hasn't Terrence Motecall, a jail robbing it, been charged for PC 187, which means first-degree murder? Because like I said numerous times, y'all just want to say we make a change, but yeah, I don't see no change going on. Because just like, just a couple minutes ago, I seen that another person passed away in police custody, and there's a saying, how many enough is enough? You said it's time for a change, but yeah, ain't nothing changed. You guys wanna say liberty and justice for all, but how is it justice for all when everybody is getting killed or slashed by police? And there's a saying though, too, and the old school saying, sometimes you have to take justice in your own hands. And for me, I'm not trying to do that. Terrence Mordecai, jail robbing it, and for everyone that's not looking up, look up right now. Otherwise, we just say, hey, why we paying taxes for y'all gonna pay attention? It's called being irresponsible and immature. Heck, my freaking five-year-old knows how to listen sometimes better than you guys. Hey, Howard Chan, look up though, too. And that's why, I ain't tripping, because I'm pretty sure, hey uncle, I know you watching this, love you, because I'm even pretty sure my uncle's ashamed on some of you guys that's up here. Because some of you guys, my uncle endorsed. And that's the thing, showing sweet, liberty and justice for all, well, actually start doing that. Otherwise, we'll be number two, you don't piss off a Sagittarius, because we're pretty unpredictable.
Juve, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Yeah. Just do what you guys damn jobs, and stop sitting down and eating every dang thing like a hippopotamus.
Juve. Armando Flores, Sally Shapiro, and then Robert Copeland.
Okay, first off, I want to start by letting you guys know that you're being watched, and you really have no shame by not paying attention, eating, drinking, yet when we ask a question, or where somebody interferes, you throw them out, or you take their time and have reasons to tell them what they're doing wrong? What about you guys? Why don't you do your job? Why is she eating over here? Why can't we bring food? We've been here two hours, almost three hours. We're hungry, too. Yet we have to watch you guys eat, because we can't bring anything in here. And you throw people out with the cops, but it took you so long to take that mic out? What is wrong with that? Racist? Is that a little racist? You throw the cops on every other person that is black or brown?
Yeah.
Yet when there's a Caucasian person, they're allowed to talk as long as they want to? You even protect them? You even send the police guarding them on their way out, really? That is really nice, and that really speaks for all of you. And God is watching everything that you're doing right here. And so is the world, so is Sacramento, so are all the people in Sacramento, watching the disgrace that you guys are doing to the community. Pay attention. You expect us to sit here for three hours, listening to you congratulating each other, giving each other hugs, having your own conversations? Yet when we come up to speak, nobody's paying attention? They're somewhere else, thinking whatever they're thinking? That's really pretty. That's really, really nice. It speaks a lot for this great Sacramento that you are trying to build.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. The next speaker is Sally Shapiro, Robert Copeland, Eric Frame. Is Sally here? I don't see Sally. Robert Copeland, then Eric Frame, then Fong Lee.
Well, I have a few questions, active citizen. How much did it cost for that raid at 7th and N today? And a police officer's right over here, that was the leader of that raid.
About a hundred grand, a cop.
I'm probably gonna hear crickets on that. And on another issue, why didn't you wait till the last minute to decide on, who decides on Measure U the very last week you can do it? I don't understand that. Why couldn't you have done it last week? Was it ready? Or the independent auditor? I don't, why? I don't see a leader in this group of city council members. I mean, I'm really disappointed in the city council. And I'll probably vote against Measure U, because it funds more cops. If it took out the cop, that bit part of it, I probably would support it. Because I've seen the cops harass people, take couches, water bottles.
I mean, really, harass the homeless population.
We don't need more cops, we need more community services, we need more people, more help, more housing, more jobs. I don't see that being provided by the city council. And I'm gonna tell you what I am gonna support, I'm gonna support Prop 1, 2, 10, the local rent control, that comes on this election, and probably the auditor, but I will not support Measure U as written. Thank you.
Eric Frame, then Fong Lee, then Trina Allen.
Before I start, I want to let you know I'm speaking as a concerned citizen and not a candidate for, an independent candidate for State Senate District 6. I want to point out this story here, because it's not just local city council that's suppressing free speech, it's the entire state of California. Let's go into how you're suppressing free speech. Right now is a perfect example. You're postponing public comment till the end, like you did back in the old days. You've cut the number of public comment probably in half, because people have to go home, people have to take a bus. You are not paying attention, that one's clear enough. You're eating against the rules. You banned a person for a month, a person that was grieving over the death of his brother, Stefan Clark.
No, that wasn't the right --
Don't interrupt, that's another point I'm trying to make. You guys know why we're angry. You guys know why we're angry, and I'll go into that list as well. We have unarmed black men being killed by police, Stefan Clark, Brandon Smith, Joseph Mann, Desmond Phillips. Homelessness is getting worse and worse, it's starting to include and has included disabled elderly people that are being abandoned out there on the streets. You don't have enough public bathrooms, water fountains, trash cans, in fact, you've closed and removed many of them.
They turned it into their --
You have empty buildings all over town that you can start utilizing, but you refuse to. Worst of all, that I saw in the last couple months, was people have come up to you and told you there's child trafficking going on at the children's receiving home, and your response to that was, that's not our jurisdiction. Where is your heart? Where is it? That's not a proper response to people pleading about children being trafficked in this city. You should all be ashamed of yourselves. You really should. It's really, really frustrating. The people of Sacramento and California need to unite. There is one issue, and that is the corruption of our leadership in this state. It's not time to bicker with each other.
Frame, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Love is the answer. Think big picture, vote independent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frame. Next speaker is Fong Lee, then Trina Allen.
It's really matinee. It's really sad that we have to witness a person being called the N-word, and it took you guys this long to respond. We are faced with a moral crisis of children being kidnapped by the government, and the genocide of black and brown and unhoused people. Sacramento and the rest of this country is engaging in the human rights abuse reminiscent of the illegitimate occupation of Gaza. It's ironic how this country and Sacramento is using the same tactics as Israel against Palestinian children. Isn't Sacramento a sanctuary city? Why are you not, why are you sending your Gestapo as cleanup crews to give eviction notices and harassing people who are conscientiously objecting the abuse of families and children? I hope it's not a surprise to you, but the people detained by ICE are on their own homeland. We, the public, call bullshit on your ban on free speech at city council meetings and other forums. Freedom of speech, freedom of to assemble, our human rights continue to be violated. The public is paying close attention to the police intimidation tactics against organizers, against ICE detention, and allowing murderers of black and brown people to, no matter how you dress it up, how you dress up a pig, action still speaks louder than words. You may feel that you have the power and the money to hire the Gestapo to intimidate people, to protect your interests. The public is aware of your failure, no matter how you try to hide the truth. Eventually, globally and locally, unjust systems will fail and topple under the weight of oppression. You declared war, but we will win.
Ms. Lee, your time is complete. Will you make your final? Our next speaker is Trina Allen. Following Ms. Allen is James Battles, then Paul Boodwall.
We come to you before on repeat, saying the same, week after week, the same reasonable basic things, as your officers pump out brutalized body after brutalized body. So many black community members never coming home again, and all this council can manage to do is spin tragedy and terror into calls for decorum and peace, as if you were being attacked, as if it were you experiencing the weight of state terror in Sacramento. Your problem is with marketing and rhetoric, you have too much of it. You create a symbolic sanctuary city as your officers raid the protesters who have taken a real stance in challenging ICE and children in cages.
People were there, we seen it.
Right. You call the terror of July 11, 2016 unfortunate. Isn't that what you said, Harris? You said it was unfortunate, but Joseph Mann was murdered. It wasn't unfortunate, it was torture. And your officers use their vehicles as weapons again this month, hitting a 16-year-old child.
What's it gonna add?
You want to wait for all the facts, but you'd already seen the video of Stefan Clark being assassinated in his own backyard. And then you get disappointed when your people bring their pain to you, right, Steve? You aren't being attacked. You are being held accountable for your actions as well as inaction. You actively help create community discord through gentrification, high rents, no humanely paid jobs, exacerbating poverty, crime, et cetera, and then overfund, militarize, and give impunity to the police who you sick on your people in the same black and brown communities. Even worse, you remain silent, passive, and removed from the terror and trauma they inflict. FYI, your police wouldn't need a dime for Measure U if you spent this energy and funding to let marginalized communities lead in the first place. So I hope what you said tonight is not rhetoric. And any commission that you create will have binding power, not simply input. No one wants to input if you aren't gonna take those words to action.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Your time is complete. Thank you. Our next speaker is James Battles, Paul Boodwall, and Hardip Singh Dodd.
Mayor, members of the city council, while the economy of Sacramento has improved, it hasn't improved for everyone. Unemployed or underemployed continue being pushed out of their homes and onto the streets of Sacramento. We no longer count them by the hundreds, but by the thousands. Thanks to the vision and work of Sister Libby Fernandez, the volunteers and donors, Loews and Fishes serves as ground zero for efforts to help our homeless brothers and sisters. On the Loews and Fishes website, they state that the philosophy of Loews and Fishes is to recognize the dignity and the spiritual destiny of each person. I'm here to encourage you and our community to pledge to make our city's philosophy, or our mission states, as it pertains to all people, to recognize the dignity of each person. Those without shelter, immigrants, the middle class, and the poor. I recall in 2016, Councilman Harris, I recall in 2016, I was watching a news clip the other day, the city of Sacramento launched a six-month mobile shower trial for our homeless period that at that time was successful. I also know the city is looking at opportunities to provide our homeless with access to public loo or latrines, which I applaud. But getting back to the idea of providing mobile showers as we did in 2016, just some ideas, maybe we can look at San Francisco, where LA is a model of partnering with Lava May, by converting retired RT transit buses as they did in San Francisco. Or maybe we can ask Governor Jerry Brown to provide National Guard troops to erect temporary fuel showers and cooling tents to address the immediate needs of our homeless brothers and sisters. If the guard can sit on the border and, as ICE agents separates families, surely we can get humanitarian assistance in Sacramento for our homeless. And I just wanted to show, I think these are up there, if I can get, this is a picture of the Lava May bus, I believe they have it, they're converted buses in San Francisco and LA. And then, of course, I recall my time in the military as a medic, the military's showers would also be something that maybe we could get.
Battles, your time is complete.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Paul Boodwall, Hardip Singh Dodd, Tejinder Singh, and then McWorthy. Is Paul Boodwall here? I don't see Paul. Hardip, or Tejinder? McWorthy is next, and then David Andre, and then Elizabeth McDaniel.
Yeah. Have y'all had any training of defusing a situation? After the mad hour? Have y'all had any training in that? No. The police department has that training. So you got a problem, it's not the police department. And also, we'd like to find out, do we have a right to the charter minutes of their meetings, and when those meetings are scheduled, and do we have a right to attend the charter minutes? Now, last week, we just hear about the upgrade, the city council rules here. What happened to that? Somebody said quitter to see, something, I don't know. But anyway, to his fine kid, you should be telling your people a different story. You should be telling them to sign up for citizenship. When you trespass and kiss in your hand, you commit a crime, child endangerment. Now, those people, kids can go to jail to custody of their babies for child endangerment. But we, I don't know where his head at, but he going the wrong way. And also, when we look at economic development, Mayor, what are you doing? We ain't said nothing about the tax earmark and nothing. We ain't said nothing about the Economic Development Trust. $3.75 million kicks out $9,000 a month. You could borrow the three out of six, which will only cost you $15,000 a month. How many units can you build? Do something, people. You better get a line. You heard the same bullshit now going on the past 11 years. And we ain't seen nothing done. What have the black people on your pound put on the tape? Nothing. They can't, people, and you know it. An athlete and a business major have never operated a business in some, was once a business of development, it's nothing there, people. Wake up, Dale, you're going backwards, man. You can't control the thing.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy, your time is complete.
He gonna get out of hand.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Our next speaker is David Andre, Elizabeth McDaniel, Mackenzie, and then Jeffrey Tardaglia. I believe Mackenzie's left.
Not gonna say good evening, because it's not a good evening here in Sacramento. The poor people of this town are being pimped by the people up here. Time and time again, I hear these empty promises to help the homeless. I hear these empty promises that the police are gonna be trained and not just be killing black people. That's not happening. We're being pimped. Somehow, these people have to be held accountable, and I've been trying it for like four and a half years, and it hasn't happened. I don't know what it's gonna take. We're gonna have to come up with some other deal. But you're talking about a half-cent sales tax, like you're doing a lot of stuff for the community? How much money did you spend on the at least 42 officers in full riot gear? Who spent the day harassing anti-ICE protesters? While you're sucking up to the ambassador, or what his name is, from Mexico who came here, who's been here for five years, you're sucking up, taking prisoners of us who are fighting against ICE? How, what kind of hypocritical shit is this? It's been four years of this stuff. You guys are not doing your job, you're taking the people. Really? I mean, you guys gotta take some kind of therapy or something, because this is bullshit. I can see it.
People are hurt.
Excuse me. Your cops with bikes tried to knock us down today. Your police officers, some Sacramento police, tried to knock women and children down with their bicycles. Do you know what's going on? My God!
No, we wanna kick people out, though.
They're blind.
My next speaker is Elizabeth McDaniel, Mackenzie, then Jeffrey Tardaglia.
It's your last warning, one more time, you're leaving.
You know, this is ridiculous.
Maybe you should worry about how your cops --
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to leave. You're gone.
These guys' houses are contests, at their house!
This gentleman is gone. I've warned him at least seven or eight times, and I've tried to be very, very --
You're what?
For shouting out.
People are hurt.
I need you to leave, you.
He stressed out.
Proud.
He stressed out.
Not David Andre, this gentleman in the black t-shirt, I need you to leave.
Fuck this guy, I'm gonna hit him. Fuck this guy, I'm gonna hit him.
Major point.
Fuck this guy, I'm gonna hit him.
I need you to leave.
Yeah, yeah. That's what your cops think about people.
I need you to leave.
That's what your cops think about people.
I need you to leave.
Fuck this guy, I'm gonna hit him. Sac PD, that's a quote.
Okay.
That's a Sac PD quote. That's your police.
That is your police.
That's the people who care about safety and accountability. Fuck this guy, I'm gonna hit him.
With a car.
That's John Tennis, you know it.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McDaniel, you have the floor.
Okay, good evening, God bless you all. Jesus is the luminary, I'm the illuminator, and the deeds are very dark and they're naughty. The love of money is the root of all evil. I'm gonna shed light on a couple of things this evening. One, this is regarding the California leash law. On June 2 of last year, my little puppy was attacked by an Italian mastiff in the apartment complex where I live. When the officer came, get this, he was Officer 360, and he came at 6:30. I was at church at the time, so when I got home on June 4, he had left a note. So when I finally got in contact with him, he tells me that the leash law is only applicable to, it's not applicable to private property, and I'm like, newsflash, I mean, this is a residential apartment, and the dogs should be corralled. I suggest that there are certain breeds that can be allowed to be in apartment buildings. The one apartment with like three adults, three children, four dogs, that's ridiculous, okay? And they should be cited for not having their dog on a leash. Also, I want to bring to your attention about -- Also, I want to bring your attention about the ACE Agency. When Hovanna Huardo comes before this council, require her to speak English because that is a disrespect to the United States of America, and have her to have an interpreter here. In addition to that, it's my understanding, because this is my plight, my story, that she told the whole ACE organization that I was crazy. Do I look crazy? Because I shared with her a long time ago about the swap-out. In addition to that, what she did, she was just a bait because I had got an anonymous text from someone inviting me to one of the ACE meetings. So now I'm crazy? Now that I peep your whole card? You know, you know, what, I'm crazy now? So at any rate, I strongly suggest that you all just take a look at the overall systematic assault, the networking assault, to try to make people homeless. Because when council was in session for two, I'm going to finish, when council was in session for two weeks, oh my, my, my. But God, hallelujah, he is my support.
McDaniel's time is complete.
I don't rely on ACE. No, ACE is a part of you all.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Your time is complete.
All right? Okay, well, require them to speak English next time.
My next speaker, I believe Mackenzie, has Mackenzie left?
Excuse me.
I believe Mackenzie has left. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Tardagia, then Darshan Mundy, Jaswinder Ray, Parmjit Kehera.
Mayor, council members, thank you for being helpful. Thank you for your comments. Tomorrow morning, there will be the streetcar at Secoc. It is a shame that how little it seems the city of Sacramento has put in its direct dollars to this streetcar project. That's why the sheet is sitting there right now in front of you. Now, the other side I will offer is say, for the RT board members on the City Council, who screwed the pooch? This is dealing with the J Street bicycle path. You have now lost the 21st Street dealing with the Lutheran Church. You have now taken out the 28th Bus Shelter. You have now taken out the 29th. So that means for anybody that needs to go on the 30 Route, J Street, you have how far to walk from Alhambra or 27th Street to get to Sutter Hospital? You made it great to leave, but to get there, it is a major problem. It doesn't seem like if you had a city disability community council that did this become impossible review. When I leave here, I'm going to go see if you finally managed to correct the seat cover in the disability public stall. For six months, nothing happened. I mentioned it repeatedly. Hopefully, you will have fixed it. But at the same time, I'll offer interest, I'm very interested for the fall that we see what goes on in regards to renters. So I am really interested to see where this renters rebate program that, Mayor, you have talked about, what's actually going on and happening? Anyway, obviously, dealing with the, should we say, what you put in bus, the thing through there of blocking, you know, I mean...
Tardagia, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Will you correct dealing with the bus pass?
Thank you, sir. I have a few that I believe have left. Is Darshan here? Darshan Mundy?
No.
Jaswinder Ray?
Nope.
Parmjit Kehera? Sammy Chikhan?
Nope.
Sammy? Amar Jit?
Nope.
Amar Segil?
Nope.
And then Andrea Tullis? Andrea still here?
Nope.
I don't believe so. Janema Grady? Mr. and Mrs. Grady?
I have a letter that I will read to you for...
No, no, no. Go ahead.
No, she's disabled and she's a friend.
Are you Andrea?
Yes.
I just called your name, Ms. Tullis.
Okay, but I'm saying in regards to my daughter, I will be reading a letter.
Okay, I just called your name. It's your turn to speak.
I'm coming up there, ma'am, right now.
Thank you.
Bear with me.
But your daughter is not here, correct?
She is here, but she does not want to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. And following Ms. Tullis is Lambert Davis.
I don't know how to work your screen. So this was a letter written by my daughter. This letter was written in October of 2017 and given to the Natomas Unified School District Superintendent. It was given to Ashley Ashby. It was given to Daryl Steinberg's office, with me never receiving any information. So I just asked that this be heard for her. Then I can address my issues. Bear with me, please.
Ma'am, you do only have two minutes.
Ma'am, I have a disability, and this has been going on. I've missed three times. I'm trying to get to the letter.
Wanted to let you have two minutes.
And even reading it, I'm asking, can you stop the time?
Have stopped the time.
Till I can get to the letter?
You can submit the letter to us.
I've done that, and no one's done nothing but leave her to be...
Why don't you submit it to me directly?
I did.
Well, why don't you leave it to me right now?
Because I did that with the clerk. Within the last 30 days, Howard Chan did not call me, Susannah did not call me, Ashley Ashby did not call me, and my child has been abused, and I had your officers attempt to arrest me as what they say a 602 because I'm a mother in distress? And I told them I feel like I'm getting raped every day because I'm dealing with officers that do not know diversity. Why? Because we came from San Francisco. So did you, Mr. Steinberg. You know my father, Albert Tullis of the Huntington Hotel and the Knob Hill Spa, very well. He's taking care of you. I know the governor. But like I'm saying, can I just have a chance to get to my child's letter?
Ma'am, you have 45 seconds left. Do you want to sit down and find the letter?
Ma'am, I was responding to the mayor. I have not had a chance to get to the letter. Still, I'm disabled. Can you work with me, please?
I understand that, and I've stopped your time. Would you like to sit down and find the letter?
But no, I have it. Can you just give me a moment?
You have 45 seconds.
All of this, ma'am, I haven't had a chance to find it.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we...
Because I haven't had a chance to speak at three meetings.
No, hold on. We'll call you again tonight, but why don't you sit down? We'll get to the next speaker.
Can you just, I have the letter here, but if someone would give me 10 seconds?
Okay.
Because at 34, I've had to start taking ADHD medicine. I went to six high schools in San Francisco, never happened then. Can you be patient with me? This is the problem with ADA compliance. That's fine.
I'll give you a more time.
Here's my daughter's letter, and I'm asking for it to be read. The letter states, October 22 of 2017, Dear Heidi, Dear Natomas Unified, here is my message. My third grade year, me and my mom came to Sacramento. Things at home were great, not much at school. I was picked and bullied on from my first day at H. Allen Heights. One girl in particular wouldn't leave me alone. From the day I started, this girl had been bothering me. If it wasn't for her moving, I'm quite sure it would have continued. Since the third grade, I'd reach out to teachers and staff to help in these situations. Some of my past days, I feel I could have been dead, and Natomas Unified would have never cared. Some kids were cool to talk to, however, I did not take the time to know what these situations I had brought to their attention were. As school went on and kids kept continuing being mean, my mother was teaching me to deal with it at this point. Fifth grade, teachers weren't clear on my AP. I had a very hard time keeping up. Seventh grade, there was a misunderstanding with the substitute in which I was made to write a 31-chapter slave report while her grandmother is Caucasian. This is when my mom spoke to Lynn Carley. My mother's my only helping voice. Each year I've been in this district, there's been some type of major problem. Fast forward to my freshman year at Endercombe High School, where I was still being bullied. Someone committed suicide in the bathroom. We don't even have a bully awareness day. No grief. Project serve money, where is it? Somebody take notes.
Am I giving...
Very sad matters. I tell teachers and staff only once again to have no help, just a little giggle and promise I'd be fine. I wasn't. I knew I wasn't. After attempting help, I felt my only option was giving up. As dramatic as it sounds, I was very insecure, and what people said had a huge impact on a lot of my actions. As close as my mom and I were, the last thing I wanted to do was tell her I felt like giving up. One morning before school, I went to Safeway and got a box of pills.
Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
And I had seen a lot of other students taking them. The idea of crossing, of ending my life crossed my mind as I sat in the seat with my teacher in the classroom and took the whole box of pills.
Ms. Tullis, your time is...
No 911 call.
Please take your seat. Your time is complete. You were given four minutes.
I gave you, I gave you four minutes instead of...
Hold on, no, I haven't had a chance to say what I had to say. No. Hold on. I was looking for my daughter's letter. This is the third meeting I have been put on.
Ma'am, would you please take your seat?
Let me, let me, let me ask you a different...
And I sat in the meeting, and I didn't speak. When y'all talking about Natomas and then the taxes, that lady got up here and talked for four minutes and 38 seconds, and I watched it.
Ms. Tullis, let me ask you a very basic question. What can we do to, what do you want us to do to help you? What can we do to help you?
Look at this, sir.
Okay.
I have been, I talked to our US Senator, Kamala Harris.
What do you...
I am asking to finish this as the respect of my child, sir, please.
No, your time is up, ma'am. That's it. Your time is up. If you, if there's something specific...
Okay, so I spoke for her, so now it's my turn.
You're done. Sit down, please.
But you know, why am I not, why am I not being able to have a voice?
My Chief of Staff, Kelly Revis, thank you, we're happy to talk to you offline. As you always do to help you.
Howard Chan never returned my call.
You haven't talked to my Chief of Staff here, okay?
Sir, sir.
We'll try to help you.
I'm asking for a chance to hear from me.
No, enough.
Okay, so who's going to talk to me about why the police tried to take me to jail when my baby went to jump out of the car two days ago?
Is Ms. Revis right now, okay? Back at the back of the chambers, outside the chamber.
That's what Howard Chan did? That's what this lady did?
Ma'am, sit down.
For a scene, did?
That's it. You're done. Next.
So I mean, but why?
Because you get two minutes. Those are the rules.
So 88 means nothing to nobody. Somebody should have a phone and recording this.
Call the next person.
Do you see my daughter? Look at her, Mr. Steinberg, you have a child who needs...
We're happy to help you. We're happy to try to tell you.
He took a whole bottle of pills and they laid her there to die.
We can't help you in this forum. We can't help you like this. We can help you in a, we can help you in a different way.
I'm not handing it up to the US Congress.
Okay.
Do you see my baby?
Okay, yes.
Do you see my baby?
Okay, okay.
But I can't speak for her?
I don't...
This is wrong. This is wrong. All I'm asking is somebody to hear this.
We will. But we will try to help you. I promise you.
Do you see my baby?
I'll try to help you.
She tried to jump out the car, and your officers tried to take me to jail.
We'll try to help you, okay?
Sir, I can't, that was in October. You said that, and I have an email from your office.
Okay, okay, okay.
You know what?
Okay.
All I want to know, sir, where's equal justice for my baby?
Okay.
Because they were a part of a homicide? When Gavin Newsom was the mayor at 1050 Macallister in Ella Hill Hut, you were in San Francisco? Help my baby.
Okay.
No one is.
We will try.
And now they're going to take me to jail?
We will try. Nobody's going to take you to jail.
You know what?
Officers, you can...
I'm contacting the FBI, sir.
Okay.
I don't know what to do. No one has helped her. Mr. Chan is not contacting me. Susannah's not contacting me. Mr. Steinberg, I don't trust anyone.
I understand. Give us one...
Look at my baby.
Give us one more try here, okay?
Look at my baby. It's been five years of child abuse. Look at her. Look at her, Mr. Steinberg. Come on, just meet me halfway here.
Okay.
Please, please.
Okay.
That's all, I've never felt crazy like I feel about trying to protect my baby.
Okay.
And your officers won't even, I had nine police walk up on me and tell me I'm a 602. You for what? Because she tried to jump out the car?
I'm sorry.
Ashley Ashby's done nothing.
I'm sorry. Please, we'll try to help you, okay? Please.
Nobody cares.
Okay, yes, we do.
Nobody cares.
Yes, we do.
And I need everyone to know, our US Senator Kamala Harris is telling me this should be able to handle right here.
Okay.
Julie Robles is our assistant, and I have her personal telephone number.
We're happy to...
And it's shit been done.
We're happy to contact her, okay? Go ahead.
My next speaker, my next speaker is Lambert Davis.
Just look at my baby.
Michael Voight. Is Lambert Davis here? Mr. Davis, then Michael Voight, then Lorraine Brown, Ebony Harper, and then Jamal Jefferson.
I have something to do with the guest speaker request.
Okay, Mr. Davis, come on down here so we can conclude the meeting, okay? Please.
I, I, there's no time to look. I can speak to me or her.
Okay, Mr. Davis, you've got two minutes.
Look at her.
Please.
They don't care. They don't care.
Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Jefferson, can you help us out here, please?
What the hell I'm doing? There is no justice for none, but, and these are federal laws? Nobody cares?
Okay, Mr. Davis, please. Okay.
I've already contacted his wife, who's the board of trustees, who's supposed to help that child out of council. You think I got a call back? Never. She's a black kid. COVID put a lawsuit out. Black kids are being criminalized for behavior associated with ADHD. I never touched a special ed document, but she's been dragged through special ed. The human learning consultant said her brain has been retarded, and this has traumatized her. Tony Thurman, I have his cell phone number.
Ms. Lee and Ms. Jefferson, can you help us, please?[1604.33] Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, you may want to turn your page. Turn your page.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, other way.
Okay.
The side, I would say. It's up and down?
Yeah, that's good enough.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This, I came down, and I wanted to talk to really Mayor Steinberg because you have a Rails Grant Program that I've been part of. I tried to get through this process, and I have proof, and I'm going to bring it to you. I want to thank you for filing that lawsuit against Wells Fargo for what the racist practices they did against blacks regarding money. Now, this Rails Grant Program, I applied for it, and when I received back what I submitted online, it had been altered. And I have proof that it's been altered because I'm old school, and I wrote down my rough draft first, and then I submitted it. When I received back my copy, this is a perfect example right here. It asked you to list what town, what part of the city you're from. And I listed Del Paso Heights. When I got back my copy from the city, look what they marked. They marked every neighborhood in the city. I'm not from every neighborhood. I'm from Del Paso Heights, and I'm very proud of that. Then right here, it shows where I, it tells, it asks you one simple question, and I have copies for you. Are you a Rails Grant recipient? I said no. And I also put down that I had received no money. When I got back from City Hall, the staff sent me back, or whoever, they marked both yes and no on my form that I sent in, and then it still has zero. You can't have yes and no regarding grant money. If you have received it, then it'll be an amount here. If it says no, it should be zero. So I am officially protesting that process because we are a federally state-certified business. It's very difficult to become state and federally certified as a small business. We have a manufacturer in Huntington Beach that can get out pallets of cheesecakes. That's what we specialize in. And I think that I should have a meeting with you. Why? Because I've gone all the way up to your chief of staff. I have all my information right here so we can cut the time, Lou.
Will you make your final comments?
This is it. I want to hand this, and I want this to go to Mayor Steinberg. And I will be at an event tomorrow because our cheesecakes are featured there, and I know you'll be there and as well as Mr. Chan.
Thank you, sir. So, okay. Give that to me, and we'll take it.
That's a major problem when your paperwork is altered.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. You can give that to the clerk. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Michael Voy, Lorraine Brown. So Michael Voy, Lorraine Brown, Ebony Harper, and then Jamar Jefferson.
Evening, Mayor, and council members that are present. Justice delayed is justice denied. And a lot of the problems that you're having with your decorum and everything, trying to conduct business, is a result of the fact that there's been really no real solution to the Stefan Clark. There's been no resolution of that. Now, I, we understand, everybody understands the technicalities. But I want to, I want to highlight a couple of things. In the Sacramento Bee, July the 23rd, so it's about a week ago, and she didn't have to put it up there. I'm sorry. In the Sacramento.
Pause his time.
Pause his time.
But we won't, we'll start his time again. It's okay. Start the time again. It's all right.
It was paused.
Okay. What I was saying is, we have a Monday, July the 23rd editorial from the Sacramento Bee, and it says in here, it was really talking about the county and the sheriff is where it began. But in here, it says Sacramento County deputies were responsible for five fatal shootings last year, according to this, their internal affairs, or some kind of audit they had. And officers with the Sacramento Police Department had another five fatalities, and yet Schubert's office hasn't released a report on an officer-involved shooting since September of 17 over a death that occurred in '16. Now, we know that you have no control over Ann Schubert, but she's got 10 cases, so there's no wonder that she hasn't been able to resolve these things or get the reports done because there's 10 of them. But this is the basis that I'm asking for a police commission that actually can perform its own investigations. That way, the city can take action.
Mr. Voy, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Sure. Then there will be some sense of closure, and the decorum can move on because the police commission wouldn't take, isn't backed up with 10, hopefully.
Thank you, Mr. Voy. Our next speaker is Lorraine Brown, and Ebony Harper, and our final speaker is Jamar Jefferson. I'm not sure if he's returned.
Corruption has been a problem, I don't know, 25, 30 years in our country, all over, every city, every county. And the only way I see our way out of this is if we all uphold the rule of law, which is equal justice for all. When we start blaming each other and we're divided, we're missing the point. Everyone's been affected. Everybody's been abused. There has been no social services, police, education, academia. It's really been very sad, to say the least, what's been going on. So when people start, what happened to these people that were mistreated? As a psychologist, I know so many people that were mistreated and killed, and they were all different cultures, all different sexes. And a lot of things that are going on right now, we can't speak of because it's classified. And so the public doesn't really know how bad things are, but they're pretty bad. And I see certain special interests that put you in jeopardy, that put us in jeopardy, that are very dangerous people. The drug industry, the war manufacturers. They have all the money right now, and everybody's beholden to them. And that's the point I was trying to make last week. They do horrible, horrible things, and they've done it to our military, to our farmers, to our private entrepreneurs, our business people, to K Street Mall. They're shutting down the malls. They are taking away our livelihoods, taking away our laws, and this is where we all have to get together and take a stand.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. The next speaker is Ebony Harper, and then if Mr. Jefferson would like to make comments, he's the final speaker.
I know it's been a long day for city council, and I'm not up here to yell, but I am up here to plead for maybe two bids. I know the city has access to bids, low-income bids, for the black trans community, or the trans community as a whole. We're, if you guys want to help our community, you know, we're out doing sex work, and I know people say pull yourselves up by the bootstraps. This is America. We're supposed to pull ourselves up by the bootstraps. But my community doesn't have bootstraps. And I know Steve Hansen, I know you come from my community, and I don't know if you know any black trans women, but a lot of us, you know, one in two black trans women have HIV. We don't have access to good care. And I work for the largest state health foundation in the state, but on my own time, I help trans women find jobs, and I help them get housing, and, you know, I do a lot in my community on my own time. And, you know, I would like the council to see how they can help the queer and trans community, maybe helping form a transgender task force or something, or Trans Non-Gender Conforming Task Force or something like that. But we do need bids. There's a lot of us out on the street messed up from crystal meth, messed up just from life because we live a hard life, you know? Being laughed at when you walk down the street, being rejected by everyone, living on the margins of the margins. We need help, so I appreciate if you not laugh, Darrell.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I apologize.
This is, this is a serious situation for me.
I'm very sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm very sorry.
Ms. Harper, I'd love to sit down and meet with you. We did help secure a grant with the LGBT Center to do what you're talking about. I'd like to hear how that's going and then talk about other things we can do to help the trans community, particularly the trans community of Colorado.
LGBT Center is not a competent center to address the services in my community. It's white ran. You know, I need, like Gender Health Center could, I need two bids. Two bids. That's all I'm asking.
I'm going to give you my card, and I'd like to.
All right. Okay, thank you.
And I think Mr. Jefferson is helping in other ways, so that concludes our public testimony for matters not on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let us conclude the evening with council ideas and comments. Maybe I'll begin, is that okay? So I want to just give, again, we talked about the Brown Act today and all the, its limitations that are, I want to use the public forum if I can to just give my colleagues, and the public, of course, a little bit of notice, if you will, about some of the future agendas that we are planning so that you can prepare, or ask any questions, or make suggestions, or changes, whatever. First of all, on August the 9th, we're going to have a cannabis workshop, including the cannabis core item, okay? So we're trying to put all the cannabis items together here so that we can get the necessary clarity, hopefully, to move forward. On August 14th and the 21st, two dates, we are going to have a housing workshop, non-voting workshop, but we are going to address three main topics. One is the issue of a housing trust fund, and if we had it, how would we maximize its effectiveness? Secondly, what do we, what do we want to look for when it comes to regulatory reform, permit streamlining, whatever else it may take in order to create more affordable housing? And third, on the 21st, we will deal, again, not a vote, not a specific proposal, just a. On the 21st, we will deal with the issue, not a proposal, not a proposal, just a discussion about the whole issue of rent and rent stabilization, okay? Which Councilmember Carr asked for, and what I think the council wants to have a discussion before there's any form of a potential proposal or any action because it's that important. On the 28th of August, I'm proposing that we have a joint meeting with the Sacramento City Unified School District off-site on the potential development of a Sacramento Promise Program. So that would be the 28th of August. That's my, those are my comments. I just want to, again, give some notice, and if any members have suggestions about what ought to be on the agenda, please, through me or the city manager in any way, I'm happy to try to accommodate, okay? Good. I'm sorry, because I'm in Geta.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of announcements here. This Saturday, we will be working with Child Action to hold a number of listening sessions with local childcare providers on know your rights regarding some of their facilities, and also to get input about the challenge of ensuring that we have adequate available childcare in the city. There will be two sessions. One, we will have one on Saturday, August 4th, at 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM. This will have both Russian and English. And also, from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock, we are going to do another English session, and with Spanish also for childcare providers. Again, this is with our council office in District 6 and Child Action Center. They will both take place at 9800 Old Winery Place in Sacramento. That's 9800. You can call or contact our office to get some more information. But this is a good place for us to get into the nitty-gritty of how we can better get more accessibility to childcare. There's about a 2,000 youth or child waitlist in our region here that's leading up to almost 18 months to two years to even get a spot. Also, on August 4th, at 9 AM to 10 o'clock, it's our Junior Giants Closing Ceremony at the George Sims Park Center. And we're going to have a blast there, closing out another great season. And we're going to close out the season in the evening by doing a joint movie night with the Junior Giants and the George Sims at the George Sims Center. Bring your blankets, bring your lawn chairs. We're going to show Black Panther. That starts as soon as the sun goes down. I know the Junior Giants are going to have a concession stand, but we will have free popcorn, but they'll also have a concession stand there as well. So we encourage people to come out to the movie night. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for a long but productive meeting today.
Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Three brief announcements. Fire Station 19 at 1700 Challenge Way will have an open house this Saturday, August 4th, from 2 to 4 PM. Next Friday, August 10th, from 5 to 9 PM, is the second Glenn Hall Food Truck Event. It was very successful last month, and this month we'll be adding a beer garden. Lastly, Glenn Hall Park Cleanup is scheduled for next Saturday, August 11th, from 9 till noon. We supply the tools and refreshments. You bring a hat and a smile. I've been leading this effort for the last eight years, and I'll be out there that Saturday, but I am looking for a successor, so if anybody is so inclined to volunteer, call me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, last but not least.
I have a job.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one comment on the workshops.
Yes.
Because of council committees and everything else, given that we're sort of a part-time body, that's a lot for August, and I don't know if it's possible to space them out a little bit, but that does significantly eat into the time we usually spend.
The afternoons. We have to, we do have to reconcile the committees with the workshops without trying to, without creating additional days for necessary for the committees. So let us.
It's just, I know end of session's coming up and other things, and so I just think it's, August is a tough month. I just offer that as some initial feedback.
Okay.
Where there's a will, as you proved earlier today, there is a way.
We could avoid the last two weeks of August or lighten those.
That being said, I will be gone. National Night Out is next Tuesday, so we've moved our council meeting to Thursday. I'll be away at the American Leadership Forum Wilderness Retreat, so I apologize.
On the what? On what?
Eight, nine.
Eight, nine.
So I will not be here for that meeting.
You'll miss cannabis.
I will miss cannabis and council, although they seem to go hand in hand. And then I just had one item for the lawn ledge follow-up log. There's an old law in the books that I think comes out of the 1920s or 30s that bans comic books in the city of Sacramento, graphic novels. And we have a person in the community who works for Common Cause named Nick Hydorn. He wrote an article on this, so I thought.
We ban comic books in the city?
Well, graphic novels.
Graphic novels.
I think we've already got it on the lawn ledge log.
You're dining, you're worrying about frigging comic books. My God, your police are killing people.
I would just like to ensure that we deal with that cleanup and legalize comics.
Okay.
Yep.
Get it on the, get it on the log here. Okay. Anything else? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.